All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the December 22nd, 20, I'm sorry, December 20th, 2022 meeting. I'm sorry, I read it wrong. We're going to call this meeting to order and start with a moment of silence. Does anybody have a moment of silence at this time?
I do.
All right.
Yeah, Jerry Grant Campbell, aged 90 years, passed away peacefully at his home with his family in Kelseyville. Jerry was born on November 17, 1932, in the town of Monroe, Iowa, to parents Kenward Grant Campbell and Fernie Edith Courier. Jerry was a dedicated family man and always worked to provide a good home. Jerry and Frances moved to Kelseyville in 1978 and developed their final home in their vacation dream location. He was mostly known for his position of maintenance supervisor for the Eel River Sawmills in Humboldt County. Upon moving to Kelseyville, he also worked as maintenance at Canokti Growers, Inc. Jerry loved tinkering in his shop and was always creating something new to improve his home. He was an avid movie collector and also a family tree historian. He was a father that was loved and admired greatly by his family. He is survived by his beloved wife Frances, whom he married in 1951, and he had just celebrated, they had just celebrated their 71st anniversary in October of this year. Jerry is also survived by his children, Edward, Jerry, Mary Ann, and Ken, along with numerous grandchildren and great-grandchildren, and his eldest brother, Jim Dick. He is predeceased by his parents, his two sisters, Vivietta and Ann, and his grandson, Colton, and a great-granddaughter, Lillian. At his request, no public services will be held. And there's another one. And then Thomas Allen Yunker was our beloved son, brother, and uncle. Thomas Allen Yunker passed away on December 1, 2022. He lived in Lake County most of his life and worked at the Kelseyville Packing Shed for 40 years. He is survived by his mom, Lois Fuller, two sisters, Regina Long and Xena Robic, and his brother Wayne Young, and nieces and nephews, Zachary, Chelsea, and Chloe Young, Christopher Fuller, Jamie Fuller, Carol Gillette, and Rachel Weaver, and great nephews Bryce Fuller and Enrique Salinas, and Thomas' girlfriend, Cheryl Vincent. And then I would also just like to send all of our love up north to Humboldt, to everybody who is recovering, waking up this morning with messes to clean up and putting lives back together with the earthquake.
Brian, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we have our item four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Are there any items that need to be added? No? All right. Item five, approval of the consent agenda. As customary, we conduct the consent agenda. Most of these items are to be non-controversial. However, if there's someone from the board or the public that would like to address one of these items, they can be pulled. So are there any agenda items from consent that need to be pulled?
Mr. Chair, I was hoping to pull and discuss item, I believe it's 5.5. No, that's not it. It's the 5.4.
All right. Item 5.4, pulled.
And I also believe that we are pulling item 5.5.
Yeah, 5.5 will be pulled for a later date?
No, it will just be-
Oh, it's a duplicate. That's right. Okay. So 5.5 is pulled. All right. Is there anyone from the public that would like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
I would like to, um-
Is this, are you pulling something from the consent agenda, or?
I'm not familiar with your process.
Oh, no problem. Would you like to say something during public input, or?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's going to be next.
Okay.
All right. All right. So is there anyone else? I'm looking online. Don't see any hands up, but I'll wait a second, just in case there are. Not seeing any, I'll go ahead and bring you back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, move to approve items 5.1 through 5.3 and 5.6 through 522, 21.
All right. Second, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're at 9:06. We'll go ahead and open it for public input. Public input is an item where you can come up and talk about an item that's not currently on the agenda. You have three minutes, and just know we're not allowed to respond to this item. So we'll go from there. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to come up and speak for public input? Come on up. There's a document there. So if you fill it out and explain what you're talking or what you're addressing, and then also state your name for the record so that we can keep that on.
Okay. The item is-
Sir, if you come to the, yeah.
The item is, and I, like I say, I wasn't familiar with your process here.
No worries.
5.10 is on your agenda. And I just want to-
Actually, I didn't know that. I apologize. Should I go back to consent?
Yes, you'd have to reopen consent. And you can pull the item and then discuss it. It's not, it's not the same, obviously, as public input.
Okay. And so we would have to reopen that. We'll go ahead and reopen, I mean, I'm sorry. We'll go ahead and reopen the consent agenda so we can pull that. I thought you wanted to speak during public input.
Oh, no. No, that's the item that I-
Okay. So we'll bring that back to consent agenda, and we'll address your item either later or at a different time. So-
Okay.
So-
Mr. Chair, I move to reopen the consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And Mr. Chair, I move to approve items 5.1 through 5.3, 5.6 through 5.9, and 5.11 through 5.21.
Do I have to open it, back it up to public input, or am I good? Okay, so I'm gonna, so before that, we take that vote, I'll go ahead and open it up to public input. I'm not seeing any. I'll bring it back to the board for action, and we have a motion and a second. So I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We are at, let's see, 9:08, 9:09. So we'll go ahead and go to the next item. Oh, actually, there's no one else that wants to conduct public input? And I didn't see anyone online with their hand raised. Is there anyone online that wants to conduct public input? No hands raised. So we'll move forward on to our 6.2, Presentation of Proclamation Commending and Honoring Kelly Kobetsky of the Lake County Law Library. And I'll present this proclamation. And if you would like to come up, those from the Law Library, Board of Trustees, and staff. So this proclamation has been conducted for the honoring Kelly Kobetsky. We recently lost her. We've been on numerous meetings this year and previously with her assistance and her guidance in regard to the Law Library. And it just seems like yesterday she just barely resigned, and we were just in a meeting with her. And so this is very tragic, and we'll go ahead and honor her. You're welcome. And so this proclamation is a commendation honoring Kelly Kobetsky of the Lake County Law Library. Whereas, since joining the Lake County Law Library on March 28, 2018, Kelly Kobetsky has served as Assistant Librarian to Law Librarian until December 2019, and served thereafter as Head Librarian at the Lake County Law Library. And whereas, Kelly Kobetsky has given generously of her meticulous skills, creativity, integrity, kindness, loyal support to the Lake County Law Library and its patrons throughout her years at this institution. And whereas, during her leadership, the Lake County Law Library was partially shut down, and precautions were taken during the pandemic of 2020. Throughout her tenure, Kelly demonstrated exceptional competence and accomplishments, and greatly contributed to the fulfillment of the Law Library's purpose of service to the bench, bar, and the people of Lake County, California. And whereas, November 15, 2022, marks Kelly's resignation as Head Law Librarian. Now, therefore, on behalf of Lake County Board of Supervisors, this proclamation is issued to commend Kelly Kobetsky for her self-sacrificing service and devotion, to express our deep appreciation and gratitude for her dedication to the Law Library and to the people of Lake County for which it serves. Passed and adopted this 20th day of December, 2022. And I know that-
It was over there on the screen. I don't know if everyone can see it.
And right behind you, too.
Oh, yeah.
In memoriam, gone too soon. May 8, 1966, to 10 days ago, December 10. I can still feel Kelly here. And I always say that she's not gone. She's just left us for a while. I've been getting emails and texts from Facebook and from her other friends, the equestrian groups, and all the people that she served. Her family, who lives out of county, was unable to be here and asked me to accept this proclamation. Thank you very much. Eddie E.J. Crandall.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it so much. Thank you so much. I just want to show you what it looks like. It's really quite beautiful. And thank you, Carolyn Purdy, for putting this together. And for Johanna, putting up the photos. Wendy, would you like to hold this? Wendy Thorne is the new Assistant Librarian. Welcome. One little note I brought with me, I received this morning. Cassie, Kelly really enjoyed spending time within the charming walls of the Law Library. When I visited, she showed me the ropes. That's a good one, since she was a horseman. She really enjoyed being there and loved the cast of characters that came in, that she spent time with. That's including the judicial, the public, the attorneys, even the homeless, the visitors from out of town, from out of state. She really loved the characters that came in and she spent time with. It takes a village. She was truly blessed to be a part of all of your village, our village. And with that, I'd like to read a very special poem by Merritt Malloy. I do better like this. It's called an epitaph, and the name of the poem is "When I Die." "When I die, give me what's left of me away, to children and old men that wait to die. And if you need to cry, cry for your brother and sister, walking in the street beside you. And when you need me, put your arms around anyone, and give them what you need to give to me. I want to leave you something, something better than words or sounds. Look for me in the people I've known or loved, and horses. And if you cannot give me away, at least let me live on in your eyes and not in your mind. You can love me most by letting hands touch hands, letting bodies touch bodies, and by letting go of children that need to be free. Love doesn't die. People do. So when all that's left of me is love, give me away."
So let me add just a few things. Kelly was full of life, and her horse Reese reflected that. I know that Kelly gave it her all for the last year to beat the cancer that eventually took her. And I did get to see her one day before she passed on, and she did maintain her dignity and grace through the end.
Yes.
Would you like to say something?
Yes. I just, I appreciated working with her. I appreciated all of the times that we spent. I enjoyed the time that I come and visit the Law Library, and she was there with you. This situation with cancer is deeply impacting me as well. My uncle has just contracted or found out he's had it, and I went to visit him this weekend. And so it's, it's one of these tragedies that we all, I'm sure, have dealt with. And so it just, until one day we have some way to combat this issue, we just have to remain vigilant and resilient and lean on one another for help. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming this morning.
Chair Crandall, there is a hand up in the Zoom room.
Yes. Where'd that come from? And so I'll open it up for Melissa, if you would like to unmute, and you'll have your opportunity to say something on behalf of Kelly.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Ah, terrific. That was a beautiful proclamation, and I enjoyed hearing all of the words that everybody spoke. I'm one of Kelly Kobetsky's closest friends, and Kelly's daughter and sister and family had asked me to be present at the meeting and accept all of the kind words and everything that your village has had to say. We really, really appreciate this honor. I'm sorry, they just, they couldn't be present at this time. We're all a little choked up still. So I just wanted to thank you all for your, for your love and your acknowledgement. And I know the family really appreciates having you do this for her.
Thank you for that, for that comment.
Yeah. Pretty tough, pretty tough times right now.
Yes.
She's a very inspiring, inspiring person, for sure. So thank you again. And I just wanted you to know how much the family is thanking you, too.
Well, they're very welcome. And we offer them our deepest condolences and strength during this time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so what we'll do is we'll close this item, and we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Let me pull it up. I'm sorry, I accidentally closed my, there we go. All right. 6.3, Consideration of an Agreement with CBG Communications Incorporated for Broadband Action Plan Consulting Services Not to Exceed $245,000. With that, it looks like we have Matthew Rothstein, Rothstein, sorry, sometimes I get it wrong. You're presenting this item. Go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Crandall and Board members. As always, it's a privilege to be here before you. Nothing had better illustrated the import of broadband access and adoption than the COVID-19 pandemic. And even prior to that time, in 2018, your board had declared Internet access for all among your Vision 2028 key priorities. On July 19, 2022, you may recall your board authorized up to $300,000 to update and create an action plan based on 2019's Lake County Master Broadband Plan, prepared by Upstate California Connect Consortium in partnership with California State University Chico's Geographic Information Center. RFP, or Request for Proposals 2232, Seeking Broadband Action Plan Consulting Services, was issued soon thereafter, as described in CAO Parker's memo to your board. And six responses were received and determined complete. We're very deeply grateful to Information Technology Director Shane French, John Carleese of Lake County Broadband Solutions, Lake County Superintendent of Schools Brock Falkenberg, and Public Services Director Lars Ewing for giving generously of their time to join Susan Parker and our Assistant CAO Stephen Carter on the consultant selection panel that vetted these proposals. While multiple candidates demonstrated significant strengths, CBG Communications Incorporated, who has recently been engaged in similar work with Napa County, emerged as the most appropriate candidate. Before your board today is an agreement in the not to exceed amount of $245,000. Staff believes CBG's work will better position the county to take advantage of federal and state funding and enable meaningful action on your board's intent to ensure quality broadband is accessible in every Lake County community. Therefore, staff recommends your board approve this agreement and authorize the chair to sign. And CBG's President and Chief Executive Tom Robinson is present in Zoom today, along with other members of the CBG team. Tom, thank you for joining, and do you have anything to add at this time?
I do, and thank you, Matthew. I appreciate it. And thank you, Board of Supervisors members, for allowing us to join you this morning and, and talk a little bit about the project. With me today is Dick Nielsen. He's our Senior Engineer, and also Christine Rivers, who is our Senior Research Associate. Matthew, if I can just share my screen, and I know the board has an extremely long agenda today, and I must say that the proclamation moved me. My, my partner is a pediatric oncologist for 30 years, and I'm, you know, I apologize. Cancer has, has had a significant bearing on my life as well. But let me share my screen and talk a little bit about the team members and then the project. So let me make sure that I've got the right thing here and share it. Can everyone see the screen? Matthew, is it up on the, the screen?
Yes, we can see it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So again, CBG Communications is a firm that has worked for local governments primarily, state governments as well. Broadband is one of our core services. Our core team members, again, Dick Nielsen, our Senior Engineer, Christine, Senior Research Associate, some team partners who will be working with us on the project but couldn't join us for the presentation and discussion today. Our Dr. Connie Book, we call her, we've worked with Connie for decades. She's President of Telecommunications Research Corporation and will be a lead on the research portion of the project. John Horrigan, who has worked with the FCC, with the NTIA, with Pew, he's our grant specialist, and, and working with Dr. Book. And then Andrew Entrikin, GIS Specialist, he's with Global Brand Strategy, their broadband practice. And Andrew has worked with us on some projects in Washington State and now joins us for this project as well. I'll go to the next slide. There we go. Okay, so the project scope of work, and I apologize for showing you the entire screen. I've had several instances recently of, when I go to the slideshow function, it locks up on me. So technology is not exactly where it needs to be just yet. But there's essentially seven major components to the scope of work. The current Lake County Master Broadband Plan is from 2019 and has the data going back as far as 2017. A lot has happened since then. Our first job and really kind of the foundational piece is to update the Master Broadband Plan, and we'll do that within the first three to four months of the project. Then develop an implementation plan based on that, and that will be in coordination. We know the county will be working with the Golden State Connect Authority on a latter grant. That'll be in coordination with the folks working on the latter grant. Identify opportunities and collaborate with local vendors on shovel-ready broadband projects. We're all already well familiar with the AT&amp;T personnel in, you know, in this, in the, this part of California, and have already signed an NDA, a nondisclosure agreement with them, to receive information in Napa County, and we'd extend that to Lake County as well. So we can really find out what they're doing and where they're headed. MediaCom, we're familiar with them and other internet service providers in and around Lake County. Identify additional opportunities and recommendations not in the master plan. We know Etheric has some rural digital, I'm sorry, Rural Digital Opportunity Fund awards from the federal government to serve a number of Lake County unserved and underserved homes. And we'll kind of look at what they're doing and where they're headed and, and see how that works back into it. We've worked in Napa County with the, with the North Bay North Coast Regional Broadband Consortium, and would do the same with the Upstate California Consortium as well, and would leverage efforts that they may have underway. And then, as you look at how the project is structured, a lot of this happens in the first six to nine months. And then it's seeking and securing grant funds. We've been successful with Napa County in getting a latter grant, and we'll be pursuing in partnership with others once the federal funding account funds are released from the CPUC. So we'll be doing that. And we're well familiar with what the CPUC is doing with the other projects. We're well familiar with what the NTIA is doing and how the bid money will flow down through the state, and some of it will be directly accessible by applications from local governments, including Lake County. And then, once those are secured, you know, John Horrigan and our team are extremely familiar with working on grant administration. We're performing some of those functions for Napa County now and for counties in Washington State. So that's kind of the brief overview. I'm sorry for rushing through it. Again, I know that you have a substantial schedule today, and wanted to make sure that you are well aware that we're ready to hit the ground running. We appreciate working with Matthew and the whole county team. And we're looking forward to diving into the project and getting things going. I will stop share and ask that, you know, any of the board members that have questions for us at this time, feel free to, to ask us anything and everything about the planned project.
Supervisor Spatia.
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate the overview, and I'm sure the public does, too. I have two questions. You mentioned Etheric. That was part of the ARDOF funds that came from the federal government, and it's been a very slow process. Will you be able to provide guidance on how we can ensure that those processes actually get completed? I don't know if the money has not been released yet, but I haven't seen any continued conversation or continued efforts from the three, I believe it was Starlink, Etheric, and some three-letter acronym. I forget the exact acronym. But there was three companies that received like $4 million to help out with improving our infrastructure for broadband, and it just, hoping that you might be able to provide some guidance on how to ensure that we pursue those companies and get exactly what those companies were provided from the federal government.
Sure. Let me, let me start with Etheric. Etheric is actually the only one left standing based on the FCC certification efforts. And they have, in the beginning, were very-
$4 million to help out with improving our infrastructure for broadband, and it just, hoping that you might be able to provide some guidance on how to ensure that we pursue those companies and get exactly what those companies were provided from the federal government.
Sure. Let me start with Etheric. Etheric is actually the only one left standing, based on the FCC's certification efforts. And they have, in the beginning, were very open to inquiries related to the process. We did that in Napa County, and they've kind of pulled back a little bit, but we'll pursue that. You know, we certainly have contacts at the FCC that we can find out what they're, you know, how they're approaching it, because the money has to be used within a certain period of time, and if not, then they have to return it to the federal government. We'll also, and we've done this in Napa County as well, we'll also look at ways, in case they don't move forward or they don't succeed, ways that what we're, you know, reviewing, researching, and then proposing and recommending for implementation around those areas, unserved and underserved areas that were not part of our ARDOF, we'll look at ways that, in case they, again, aren't successful, that the things we propose would evolve into covering them as well. In other words, make sure that, you know, everyone in the unserved and underserved has options if Etheric doesn't move forward. The other two, Starlink and SpaceX was not certified by the FCC. Now, there's a fight currently between the FCC and SpaceX on that, and so we'll have to see how that works out. LTD was decertified all throughout the country. Initially, it was in California and two other states, and then the FCC essentially took all their funding away and put it back into the ARDOF pot. So we don't know if there'll be an ARDOF two at some point. You know, the FCC hasn't said, but I think, you know, to answer your question, we'll make sure that, again, there are options related to all of the unserved and underserved, everyone that the CPUC has identified, and that we'll continue to identify. You probably know that the FCC released its updated broadband availability maps in November. There's a challenge process underway. We've actually already started working with Matthew and your GIS team on getting the broadband fabric map that we can import into the base maps that we're developing for the updated master plan, and we'll make sure that those numbers match what we believe are the unserved and underserved ultimately. So again, I know that's a long answer to your question. It's a very interesting process, because, again, you had three awardees, the FCC decertified two of them, one of them is challenging the FCC on that, but we'll make sure that we stay on top of that.
Okay, I appreciate that, and you actually answered my second question, which was, I understood from prior conversations that you would be engaged with the challenge to the FCC maps, and so you've already made that statement that that would be something you would be reviewing and providing comments back to the FCC, and I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Good. Vice Chair Pyska.
Yeah, hi. I understand that we're very early in the process, but I was just curious if you had any possible timelines that you were considering. We won't hold you accountable to them today, but I just was wondering what the, kind of, what loosely you're thinking of at this moment.
As far as timelines for completing the project or timelines for actually having broadband made available to the unserved and underserved?
I think more along the lines of the project.
Oh, okay, all right. So, yeah, we proposed a timeline that, within the six to nine month timeframe, we would have both the master broadband plan updated as well as the implementation plan developed. There's a couple of things that will adjust that as we go forward. So, again, I guess bottom line, we want to move very quickly. One of the reasons is that the CPUC has not yet issued any kind of application for the federal funding account funds, and Lake County was, you know, designated for a number of millions of dollars, I don't have the number right off the top of my head at this point, but to at least go forward and build what they would determine as priority areas. The FCC, in providing its maps, I think that slowed the CPUC down, because they were supposed to do this by the end of the third quarter, and so as part of the first part of the project, we'd be able to see what those priority areas that the CPUC thought were. However, they're now looking at the first quarter of next year. So what we'll do is we'll make sure that we look at that, we'll look at who might be a partner with the county to apply for those funds, not that the county would necessarily build it, but that the county would be involved in helping steer the funds to those areas that were, you know, the true priorities. And then you've got the latter grant, you know, coming through the Golden State Connect Authority. Their team will be working on, you know, some engineering studies that will dovetail back into our implementation plan. So we will keep that six to nine month timetable, but may have to adjust it based on what happens both at the CPUC and also what happens with the latter grant activities. Our main goal, and I think we had indicated this in the proposal, is to make sure that the county can take advantage of the funding that's out there, and that's really critical, because you've got the funding, that's the last parts of the funding that are coming down through the CPUC from the original, both CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan, the ARPA funds. However, you've got the new funding, a huge amount of funding that's going to flow down through the state, and there will be some that Lake County could directly apply for coming from the NTIA. Now, the NTIA is still targeting June of next year for that, the funding, notice of funding opportunities to be available, that people can apply for it, you know, that... But however, the, you know, the state has a hand in that, because a lot of it will be distributed through the state, and then it'll be up to the CPUC to set the timetable. Again, I know that sounds like a lot of, you know, if thems, and it's our job to keep track of that, to make sure that Lake County can, you know, can take the fullest opportunity of the funding that's out there. Rest assured, that's one of the things that CBG is known for, is managing projects so that we can, you know, essentially turn on a dime if we need to, to make sure that we achieve the aims, and the biggest aim is making sure that there is funding available for whoever will build out the remaining infrastructure for the unserved and underserved. Oh, and let me add just one more thing, and I apologize, there are so many piece parts to the process, is there's a second tier of this, and I want to make sure that everybody is aware of that, is that there's not many in Lake County that can currently achieve what the NTIA says is the ultimate goal, which is 100 megabits symmetrical for residents and gig symmetrical for educational institutions, government entities, businesses, you know, all those that would be considered, you know, organizations rather than residents. So we want to make sure that we keep our eye on that, that process as well, not just getting the unserved and underserved up to the level of the others in Lake County now, but also getting everyone the capability of moving to that 100 megabits symmetrical in the future.
All right. Thank you for that explanation, and I appreciate also mentioning the latter. I seen it in the contract and in the questions that you, that were put in that application as well. So noticing that in the contract really sees that we're, shows that we're working synergistically on that, and that helps. Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I apologize, I'm the new kid on the block here, so I haven't had the opportunity to review all the hard work that preceded this RFP, but it's very exciting. Because I'm the new kid on the block, I'm seeing two main technologies, and that would be basically high-capacity fiber and maybe high-capacity wireless broadband, where fiber and those ground-based technologies aren't really suitable. And I see there's also a survey aspect to this as far as what the next steps are going to be, and that you're going to be asking people in our community what they think. In the most rural areas of my district, fiber is probably going to be a bridge too far, so the question is wireless technologies. And when you take a first look at this, like, yeah, everyone needs internet, everyone needs broadband, in places where optic is not practical and the backup is basically 5G and stuff like that, it isn't necessarily universally popular that if we bring broadband to a rural area, but the vehicle of that is a string of 5G antennas. You know, I realize we don't have a horse in this race. The FCC has done what it's done, and basically taken away most ability of local jurisdictions to regulate where 5Gs go. But if we're going to be encouraging one technology over another, I want us to be transparent about it, and especially at the time we're surveying our community about what their druthers are for improved broadband access, I want us to, I think it would be prudent to also survey their, any possible sensitivities or preferences between, for example, micro trenching technology for fiber or a string of 5G antennas in a particular jurisdiction. I'm going to use Scotch Valley as an example. They don't have MediaCom, I don't think fiber optic is necessarily going to be something, but I'm open to the ideas there. So have you, in your previous incarnations, in your previous contract work, have you done surveying, community surveys that would touch upon their sensitivities to one technology over another when we're weighing broadband access?
We have. In fact, one of the things that we typically look at is, you know, the types of applications that they have for broadband and how critical those are to them, and then, based on that, you know, do they have any sensitivities to any particular technology, whether it's, you know, an issue related to aesthetics or right-of-way management or, you know, potential private property issues? Is it health and environmental issues? And then that allows us to understand the dynamics, you know, the weighing one factor versus the other. When you look at the implementation plan, it will likely have options. I do know that on the latter grant side, that the GSCA has a substantial preference for fiber, including even in the most rural areas. That will take, in order to reduce the cost of that, that will take in the walkout engineering and design, looking at cost-effective technologies like micro trenching. And I know the state of California has recently, you know, taken a position that, you know, that micro trenching is preferred if it's going to be able to extend fiber, you know, further than it otherwise could be, you know, through traditional construction techniques. So yes, we would look at all that. One of the things we noted from the previous broadband plan was that there were some substantial adoption issues, even so, even in areas where, at that time, what was considered broadband was available, it wasn't necessarily being accessed. Yet, it was hard to tell, you know, from the work that had been done previously. In fact, there were a lot of, you know, this should be investigated further, which is what you have in a plan, you know, so down the road, you want to take a look at those things. There were some, anyway, it points towards making sure that we understand the adoption factors.
Excuse me, Mr. Robinson. Just want to ask real quick, Mr. Green, Supervisor Green, did you get your question
I think so. You're going to be asking some of these questions about which technology options are available and what their sensitivities are to that.
And I apologize for cutting you off, Mr. Robinson. It's just that we have a timeline today with interviews with our situation with the sheriff, and we're at 9:45. That starts at 10:00. So I'm pretty sure, I felt like Supervisor Green's question was answered, so I just wanted to see if we can try to move forward here. Thank you. And so if there's anyone in the public that would like to comment on this item, Joan, come on up and state your name for the record.
I would like this, John Moss, I would like the speaker to identify and define what broadband is, and I want him to itemize how he is going to reach the unserved of Lake County. How is he going to reach them if they're unserved? Thank you.
So is there anyone else that would like to comment on this in the chambers? And if not, I'm looking online. Don't see any hands up, so I will close public input and give the opportunity for a brief description of, or actually to answer that question briefly.
So Ms. Moss, we do have a more detailed description of the plan, and we'd be happy to provide you a copy of that description if you stop by our office. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for that. So with that, we'll go ahead and, it's answered, and he's going to provide that for you, so we're ready for action.
I just have one quick question left, just for recollection purposes. Are we using ARPA funds for this 245, or is that coming out of general funds?
ARPA funds.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you so much.
All right.
And while I'm at it, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement with CBG Communications, Inc. for Broadband Action Plan Consulting Services for an amount not to exceed $245,000 and authorize the Chair to sign.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Robinson and Mr. Rothstein, for the presentation and for working with us. All right?
Yeah, thank you, and we look forward to getting started.
Excellent. All right. So let's see, we'll close this item 6.3, and we still need to conduct 6.4 regardless. Okay, just wanted to make sure and go ahead and open up 6.4. Consideration of, consideration and discussion of agreement for medical services in Lake County's detention facility with California Forensic Medical Group in the amount of $3,947,351 for the term of January 1, 2023 through January 1, 2024, with option to continue through January 1, 2028, and authorize the Chair to sign. And Director Portney is here to present this item. Mr. Portney.
Good morning, Board. Good morning, community. Thank you for taking this item, and I first want to start by sending appreciation to the collaborators that were able to make this happen. That's the leaders in the Sheriff's Office and the jail, leaders at behavioral health, social services, and WellPath. We did go out to bid for jail medical services, and we received a bidder, which is WellPath, our current service provider. A lot went into conversation around full scope service of care for our jail patients, and from taking into consideration inflation, scope of work, and community-based needs, after looking at our CHNA and historical needs, we came to the 3.9 million number, and that will allow for full scope service provision for our patients. The original agreement that we have extends to 2028. The jail medical contract is supposed to be renewed and renewed or rebid every three to five years, so we extend it to five years for consideration with chance of renewal, understanding the delicate nature of this service and the difficulty to get bidders with the annual cost being 3.9. So consideration for accepting this and moving forward would be appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier.
So this is huge. It's important. Obviously, we have a responsibility to the inmates that are in the jail facility. It's important that we provide the care that we should be providing, but this is quite the increase from 1.5 million for six months, which was already an increase from the prior contract that we had, and now we're up to 4 million. Granted, there are certain changes. Granted, there are certain changes that are in there that need to be in there, such as Cal AIM, that's requiring us to do a little bit more of a holistic approach to ensuring that not only are they getting the care provided within the jail facility, but they're getting prepared for the right discharge and the right follow-through with other agencies outside of our jail. So there are additions to this. I'm not sure that I'm in favor of, in the way that it reads, it says the subject line, the term is January 21st, or sorry, January 1, 2023 through January 1, 2024, with the option to continue, but within the agreement, I don't see those terms. It just looks like an agreement from January 1, 2023 through January 1, 2028. I'd love to reduce that a little bit and maybe say January 1 through, 2023 through January 1, 2025, with then a review and potential extension to 2028, just to make sure that the services provided are adequate and that especially with the new addition of Cal AIM, that we are getting exactly what we are needing to accomplish with that mandate coming from the state. Let me go back real quick. I also looked at the reporting factors. I'd love to see if maybe we can add one reporting factor, because providing the service during intake and providing the service during discharge, that's kind of a mandatory thing, but what if there's a request? I'd like to be able to collect the data of how many special requests were made during their stay and what service was provided based on those requests, just to make sure that we're not seeing anything falling through the cracks. That was not one of the reporting factors. And also, in addition to the reporting factors, it speaks about a quarterly report or something of the kind for an internal team to review. I'd love for this to come back to the Board of Supervisors on an annual basis, just it's a large price tag. It's an important liability for us to keep track and understand what is happening and what is not happening. I think it's really important for us to make sure we don't lose sight of this important contract. So those are the three items that I'm looking to see if we can change and open that for discussion.
So you want to change it to a two-year term?
Two-year with possible extension. That way, we can keep it to, say, to 2028, but I think we need to review after spending a maximum of almost $8 million over the course of two years. I'm just, that price tag is large. I want to make sure we keep track and we keep a side of what's going on.
Director Portney, I see your hands up.
Yes, Supervisor Sabatier, I greatly appreciate your feedback and recommendations. With the jail medical services, the county is required every three to five years to go out to rebid for service. So my recommendation would be to consider three years rather than two, with the three year, or with the opportunity after three years to extend if service provisions are adequate and meet expectations. I do have, every three months, we have meetings with WellPath and essential stakeholders. They are invited to join those, and they do provide reports, they report out for their service provisions. And after speaking, after navigating this contract proposal and speaking with the representatives at WellPath, they are ambitious to have a seat at this table and present to the board and to the community about our shared successes. So my recommendation would be to consider three years rather than two with the opportunity for extension, and we will put in here the expectation for presentation to the board and community, because like you, I believe that is important. And I'm missing the third one, so if you could reiterate that, that would be helpful for me.
It was, so you spoke on the annual report. My third one was to add, to track the requests for service directly from inmate needs.
Great.
All right. I'm going to open it up for public input, or actually, I see Sheriff Martin, are you on to make a comment or?
I am, yeah. I just, I want to chime in on this just a little bit. Just let the board know, this is a pretty significant undertaking when you renew one of these contracts going out to bid. I heard it mentioned by Director Portney, is that jails require to go out every three years. I believe he's referring to the county purchasing ordinance for contracts that require at least after three years, with the possible extension for two more years. I don't know that it's a specific requirement for the jail as far as jail medical, so I wanted to clear that up. But I would, I would join Director Portney in his recommendation that this be a three-year contract. It's quite, it's quite an undertaking. It takes a lot of staff time, and I know that my department lacks a lot of staff to dedicate just to things that they need to do, and increasing their duties by 33% or 33% frequency is going to put even more of a task on them, and it's, for me, three years is a good review for this, and I don't have any understanding on the other recommendations that Supervisor Sabatier has, that's probably going to require some trips back to the table with the contractor to determine whether or not they can provide those increased reports for the same cost or not.
Thank you, Sheriff Martin. Supervisor Sabatier?
So because of the importance that we have a contract in place by the end of this month, it sounds to me like the annual report is a simple request. I'm okay with the three years, but having an annual report will help us know on year two if we need to go through the process of the RFP during that year in order to accomplish an RFP that would give it the three full years, and we can work on the RFP during that process if that's the need. So I think between annual report and the three-year contract with the potential extension to a five-year, I'll drop off the other report in hopes that it can be provided, but I don't want it to be a sticking point where all of a sudden we have a signature from the county, but not a signature from WellPath, as this is too important of a contract to throw a roadblock in there. So if it's possible to ask if that's an available reporting measure, that would be great, but I definitely don't want to block this accidentally by making too large of a request. So I'm okay with the three-year if the rest of the board is okay with that as well.
All right. I'll open it up to, well, go ahead, Supervisor Green.
Just the technical question is on the contract language itself. What would we be changing? Would it be through January 1, 2025, unless otherwise terminated? So it's a question for staff, if we, if there is consensus to bring it back after three years, what are the actual changes in the contract that need to be made? Thank you.
Is there any, all right, so what I'll do is I'll open it up to the public briefly. It looks like we have a hand up on Zoom. David Garzoli, if you'd like to unmute and make your comment, we'll start after you state your name. The time clock.
Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors, Director Portney. My name is Dave Garzoli. I, I'm the Regional Director of Operations for WellPath, and the Lake County Jail among 11 other facilities in Northern California is my operational responsibility. So I thought I would chime in and address some of your concerns. The stats and the reports that you're referring to, we do routinely report as a matter of day-to-day business, and I'm happy to get all that information to you. It's not a problem. In fact, as Jonathan indicated, it's part of our contract in the new, in this new contract as well as all the prior years that CFMG slash WellPath has been serving the county of Lake. We conduct a, every three-month, a quarterly quality assurance meeting wherein all the stakeholders, we love to have attend these meetings. They include the sheriff, the jail commander, the public health director, the public health doctor. We look to collaborate with, for example, Sutter Lakeside's ER director, the CEOs or even better, ambulances, services, and all the other people that are involved in delivering care to the inmate population. During those quarterly meetings, all of the statistics you're asking for and more are presented to the group. That's the point in time where we work on collaboration to improve care and streamline the way we deliver our service to your patients. Does that answer your primary question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
And with the, I'll also like to address your, your ask for an annual report to the board. That is something that I do in other facilities, and that's, that's something we can definitely make happen.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this on Zoom or in the chambers? Joan, if you'd like to come up to the microphone, state your name for the record, and we'll start your time.
Joan Moss, I want to know where I can find the most recent annual report, and I want to know, this has never happened, and if WellPath is already serving Lake County Jail. That's what I want to know. If there are already the people who are serving us, and if I can, where I can find the annual report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there?
The answer is yes. Currently, WellPath is our contracted jail medical services and has been for a number of years. I don't know how many years specifically, but.
All right.
And I would suspect that the sheriff would be able to provide a report if it was requested.
Ms. Grant?
In reference to the process question, if your board were to change the agreement for a three-year term, assuming you're going January 1 to January 1, it would be 2026, which would be the three-year period. Your board may want to inquire under compensation, which is section five of the agreement. It does say, under A, in consideration for its services, county shall pay to CFMG the base sum of 3.9 for the period of January 1, 2023 through January 1, 2024.
All right. Thank you for that insight. I'll close public input, bring it back to the board for either more discussion or action. And I know I didn't get to state this during the previous discussion, but I am, I'm amenable to the three years and reporting as stated, so, yeah.
Okay. I do have a quick question for clarification based on what Ms. Grant just stated. I know in part A, it speaks to the cost for the first year, but then part B says that there is not to exceed a maximum 5% annual CPI increase. And so with the term being January 1, 2023 through January 1, this kind of sets the first base price with then the increases. Do we need to change anything, or does that, does that work for future years?
Well, sir, that was my point. I'm not sure it does, but you may want to inquire of staff just to ensure that it doesn't adjust the structure of the payment.
Did you want to?
Does staff have a yes or a no to that?
Well, Stephen, I see you're shaking your head.
Stephen, come forward, please.
I don't think it does, but I don't want to answer for someone else.
Stephen Carter, Assistant CIO. No, it shouldn't need to change any of the language, because the way it's written is that's the base contract, and then up to 5% of the medical CPI, whichever one is less. So either 5% or the medical, and next year it'll go up by that amount, and then that becomes the base, and then the year after, it would go up by that same amount, depending on the CPI.
And that's until 2028?
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, if I understand correctly, the only substantial amendment to the agreement as it's presented would be on the first page, where the effective date would be January 1, 2023. We would change the agreement term through January 1, 2026. In all other respects, the agreement would remain intact, and assuming we can make that amendment on the fly, I'm ready to make a motion.
I think Supervisor Sabatier had one more.
So I wanted to, sorry. Okay.
I didn't know if, Stephen, you wanted to make one more comment before?
Is it possible to have the date for three years, but then actually add in the language with the option for two additional years?
That's where I was going as well. I'd like to see, say, the effective date of this agreement is January 1, 2023. CFMG will supply the total services described herein for the entire agreement term through January 1, 2026, with the possible extension if approved by the Board of Supervisors through January 1, 2028. Is that an appropriate change for the term?
If approved by the Board of Supervisors and agreed upon by the, by CFMG in writing.
Yes.
The extension.
But the language itself is appropriate for?
Yes, but I was adding to your language because you want a few other words.
And while I'm not sure if, and I'm sorry if it's Mr. Garzoli, I don't have the name in front of me, so I'm going off memory, do you have the ability, at least verbally, to say that that's an acceptable change? Or is that, are you not capable to provide that comment?
I see him. There he is. If you'd like to unmute?
Good morning, and yes, WellPath has no objection to that. That language is fairly common in most, most of our contracts, so we can, we have no issue accommodating that.
Ms. Grant?
And just for a point of clarification, because this is a contract, and I do see that CFMG has already executed it, the changes that your board is making today, which then if you approve it, will be subject to, I assume the chair's signature, should also be initialed at those locations by CFMG, just to ensure that all parties are literally on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so just to kind of resummarize, annual report, it sounds to me like the other request is already a part of the normal reporting factors that are brought to the quarterly, so we'll ignore that. And then the language that was just stated for the term, which would be a three-year contract with the possible extension if approved by the Board of Supervisors, and then as stated by Anita Grant with all of the additional signatures needed to make sure that this is all up to date. And I make that motion.
All right. So the motion has been offered.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Director Portney, and, that was Mr. Garzoli. There it is. All right. So it looks like we're a little behind. Would we just continue and push it back because of the time we're starting, so allowing the full, the full hour passed, the time? And so what I'll do is I'll entertain a quick break, if that's okay, because the next subjects are going to be quite extensive. So we'll go ahead and offer a quick break and be back at, let's say, 10:15, and we'll go from 10:15 to 11:15, and then after that, with the next interview, we'll conduct that from 11:15 to 12:15 and go from there. So with that, we'll go to a break, and we'll come back after a break and move forward. So welcome back from our break. We're going to go ahead and move on to our next item. And I'm going to bring it up here real quick. So with that, going on to 6.5, and we're going to conduct an interview for the sheriff coroner. As you know, the sheriff, current sheriff, has put in his submission to retire, and so with that, we need to fill his spot with somebody, and we're going to move forward with some, with the two people that have applied for it. First, we're going to start with Rob Howe, and I see he's here, so if you'd like to come up, Rob, and we'll go through an introductory discussion before we start getting right into it.
Right here?
Either side you desire. Depends what you want. All right. Well, first and foremost, thank you for, for applying and coming in. We're going to ask a series of questions, and from what I, I've gathered a consensus that we're going to, we're going to do it by district, so Moke will start off, Bruno will be second, I'll be third, Michael will be fourth, and then Jessica will be fifth. And so we'll go from there. So I note down which questions you're going to have, and we'll move forward. From what I thought, we were going to breakfast club it, and I was going to do it all, but I think we're going to go in, in order there. So with that, Moke, did you? Yeah, so just go by district, one, two, three, and then like that. So with that, going to go ahead and see if that's, if you're good with that and you're ready to go, or?
Of course, however you decide.
All right. So Supervisor Simon, if you'd like to start out, and we'll ask these series of questions. One thing I just want to note and highlight, if there's a question that we ask, Rob here, we have to ask the same question, a follow-up question. we have to ask the same question, a follow-up question that is with the next applicant as well. That way we're, we're conducting this properly, so go ahead.
Taking notes?
Yes, so take a note of the question you ask if it's a follow-up, so that way we can ask the same question later.
I was just making someone else's taking notes too, just in case we keep going. All right, excellent.
Go ahead Supervisor Simon.
Welcome, Rob. Yes, and thank you for applying for the position of sheriff. This is a unique process. I've never been through a public interview process, so please bear with me. I'll go ahead and introduce myself as usual. Moke Simon, District 1 Supervisor. My supervisoral district obviously is in the unincorporated areas. Anderson Springs, Middletown, Hidden Valley, out to the county line, down Butts Canyon, and then Lower Lake and also Clear Lake. So welcome. Please provide an overview, overview of your education, qualifications, and experience.
Okay, I'm Rob Howe. I'm currently the Chief Probation Officer here in Lake County. I'm a lifelong resident, been here kindergarten through high school right here. Two kids did the same, kindergarten through high school, wife's teacher here. So local, local product. Really, the only times I've left Lake County are for college and for the academy, very briefly, then came back. I attended the, as far as qualifications for this position, I attended the academy, post-Basic Academy in 1991. Returned immediately to Lake County. This is, this is where I wanted to work at the time. Applied and, and times were really different back then. We were actually fully staffed on patrol. There weren't any openings. So I got a call from then Lieutenant Jeffrey Markham, rest in peace, asking me, said, "I know you want to be a deputy, you're a good candidate, all that, but we don't have any openings. Would you be interested in, in taking a position in the jail?" Again, I wanted to come back here, needed a job, so I took that position. Ended up being great experience there in the jail at the time. You could also be a reserve deputy. So I got some custody experience, got a little bit of patrol experience, and got my foot in the door with the Sheriff's Office. I was there for about a year when an opening did come up in patrol, tested for and got that position. Went out as a patrol deputy, completed training and all that. And eventually, within about a year and a half, a position opened up as an investigator. At that time, the county had a joint task force that was run by the State Department of Justice, Bureau of Narcotic Enforcement, Narcotic Task Force. Really cool job, so I, I put in for that and was lucky enough to get it. Spent about six years in there. Great experience in there. There was some of the first experience I had as a training officer. I was tasked with training new agents coming in. Some of the first experience I had in, as a supervisor, supervising, I was the OIC for that unit meeting. When the commander was gone, I was the person in charge, so I got some supervisory experience. But also worked for a man who kind of, to this day, was probably one of the, if not the best supervisors I've ever had. I learned a lot from him, Gil Van Attenhoven, if anybody remembers. But, so I took a lot out of that. Ultimately, spent six years in there and promoted out as a sergeant. As a sergeant with the Sheriff's Office, I supervised the patrol. I supervised court services, the bailiffs. And I eventually was placed as a coordinator for our own task force. We called it the Community Recovery Task Force at the time, multi-jurisdictional task force, had Sheriff's Office probation, animal care and control, for getting, and code enforcement. Basically, to work as a team and focusing on problem areas. We were primarily in the Oaks at the time. I think pretty similar to a program Sheriff Martin has going, the Roadmap Task Force. That was a really good experience as a sergeant, gave me my first experience supervising kind of other fields, gave me my first kind of coordination experience. And that was the first experience I had doing presentations before the board at the time, which was quite daunting, I have to say, as a young sergeant. But this is no less daunting 20 years later here, so it's, I guess it's a full circle. But, uh, so I, I had a great time in that task force. Position came, came open for lieutenant. I tested for that. And that was kind of the first full circle moment in my career, because the first place I got put as lieutenant was back to the jail. Ended up as a jail commander there. And again, great experience there, wouldn't, wouldn't trade it. Really unique environment at the jail. It's kind of like its own city. You have, you have your own public works and medical, as we've discussed earlier today, and food services and everything under one roof. So as a manager, that was a challenge, but a good challenge. I think I had a lot of success out there. Proud of those times. And again, probably the most I've learned as far as being a manager came right there. And a leader, of course. From that position, I promoted to, to captain. As a captain, I came back out of the jail and was in charge of both patrol and administration for the Sheriff's Office. As captain, I was ultimately named Chief of Staff. Then Sheriff Rod Mitchell did not have the under sheriff position. He called his next of command Chief of Staff. I took that position, or was, was appointed that position, I should say. And again, that's really good management and leadership experience there, essentially overseeing every function of, of the Sheriff's Department at the time. I, I had that position until 2011, when I left the Sheriff's Department. I think most know the stories about leaving. That's kind of a whole different topic in and of itself. I'm really not going to get into that unless someone wants to know or cares. I know Sheriff Martin back there has a very similar story. So unfortunately, and really against what I wanted, I left the Sheriff's Department in 2011. I think I had made an impression and had some success as a leader and a manager, and I had some people reach out to me. One of them was then County Council and now County Council, Anita Grant. Another was then CEO Kelly Cox, who, who called me. And I was really, really happy to hear them try to keep me on as a county employee. And I told them, you know, why I was leaving and all that. They both recommended me, that, recommended to me that I look into the Chief Probation Officer job. It was open at the time. There had been some, some, some difficulties in keeping a position. I think they'd gone through three chiefs in only a couple of years, were on an interim chief. At the time, it was Stephen Buckholz, doing a great job, but he was a retired chief who came back kind of reluctantly just to, just to run until they could find somebody. So I, I thought about that and I did put in for that. And it's, it's been a great experience. It's, I think, rounded me out. My experience with, again, 20 years working just about everything I could do with the Sheriff's Office, and then the last decade as a department head, building relationships and running a department, having the ultimate say at this level, has been, again, a great experience, working in a great department with great people. And that brings us to today.
Okay. Thank you. Got two more to go now, so.
Okay.
Why did you apply for the position of sheriff?
Oh, that would be, that would be Bruno's question.
Oh, we're going to rotate. All right, sorry about that.
Yeah.
Let me continue the question.
Okay.
Uh, thank you again for applying. I really appreciate having more than one applicant. That way we can compare and contrast and make a decision, the tough decision today. But again, thank you so much for applying. So the next question is, why did you apply for the position of Sheriff Coroner?
A number of reasons. First and foremost, I think it's, it's just perfect timing, actually, for both me, for the county and the department, as I see it. I, I believe I, I have the most experience necessary. I don't think you can find another applicant who's probably got 20 years' experience running everything you can run in one department, and then department head experience a decade of it running another department. So I think my, my experience and my skill speaks for itself. And not just experience, but my, my success at those positions. A lot of people have experience at a lot of things. It doesn't mean they're necessarily good at them, but I think I have been. And then the timing wise, I'm, I've been doing this job. I've been in law enforcement for the county for 30 years. I'm of retirement age. I could retire anytime, but nothing's really pushing me. But certainly within the next few years was a window I was considering. This position coming up with the Sheriff's Office was, again, just kind of perfect with timing. This is an interim position. And you could look at that in a couple ways. Some may say it's just a bridge and that's not ideal, but it is what it is. We're going to have an election in 2024. We need a good sheriff to run the department until then. And that fits perfectly with me. I think I can step into that position. I think I can run it seamlessly. I think I can continue the progress that Sheriff Martin's made in that department. And I feel that the people there, certainly the command staff level people, it seems like half of them are here, welcome to ask them, but would, would be comfortable with me and that they, they know my, every one of them, we've worked together. They were all there when I was there. So I, I think it's, it's just the perfect fit. And it solves a lot of problems, I think, for the county as far as the election goes. You know, you've mentioned it, and it is a huge decision for the boards to select an interim that's going to essentially be like, like a, an elected official. But with me, I think it takes away a lot of the problems. It takes away a lot of the, the unknowns. You know what to expect. And, and again, it'll allow for a, a smooth transition and a, I would say, a clean election. There's some questions about appointing an interim. Some would say that, you know, are you giving someone an unfair advantage by essentially making them an incumbent? And you could have mixed feelings about that. Whatever your feelings are, that doesn't have to be an issue with me. I'm, I'm planning on going and running the department for two years and allowing the, the election to take place and the voters to decide who should be the sheriff. Some other problems it potentially solves is with me, I don't think you have to worry about someone going in, trying to learn the position, trying to learn how to be a department head, trying to learn how to be the sheriff, and at the same time worrying about an election or worrying about a campaign. I think we all know a campaign can be a full-time job. I've had people who work for me, you know, enter campaigns. I know how much time it takes. I know how much time away it takes from work. And that's a potential problem you're not going to face with me. You, you have some other issues, I think, when you have an incumbent, or excuse me, a sitting sheriff, and maybe a subordinate running against that person. It's divisive in a department in an election time. I've been through it twice in my years, and there's just no winning in it. You know, you're, you're going to have frontline employees who may want to support one. Maybe that's not the sitting sheriff, so they don't want to, they don't want to come out against their boss. But it just, again, I've been through it twice. It's divisive and, and that's just something you can avoid with me. And when I say, you have, you have the option to avoid those things, I'm not saying that as if you're, you're taking the second option either. I think that I'm the best option. And I think it, it just adds to the fact that those other things are things you don't have to worry about with me.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, I have one too.
Sorry. All right, I wrote it down already. So are you saying that you would not run?
I'm saying that my plan is to not run. I've been asked that question specifically, and here's the answer. I'll never say never. I have, I have a lot of, I care a lot about this county, always have. And there are some things that I really have a lot of trouble seeing happen. I've been through, I've been with this department, with that department, at a time when I think we had some poor leadership. That's not something I would ever want this county to have to go through again. So the only thing that could change my mind would be a scenario where I didn't, I didn't feel there was a good applicant or a good, somebody running. I can say that I don't think that's the case, but I'm aware of at least one who's 100% sure they're going to run and, and a few others that may consider it. And there are certainly people that I have faith in and that I could get behind. So I will say that my plan is to, to just do it for the two years and allow the election process to take place, clean process, let the voters make up their mind, and then be ready to help anybody else out in the next phase.
Great, thank you.
So my follow-up question, and I don't see it in our list of questions, and I think it applies to the question I've already asked, is we know what the state says our sheriff is required to do. We obviously have had experiences with sheriffs, so we have a vision or a view of what a sheriff is. But I'd like to get your definition or your view of what is a sheriff and what is the role of the sheriff within our county?
Well, the sheriff is the lead law enforcement, I think, authority within a county. Obviously, without jurisdiction in, in cities like Chief Rasmussen has their responsibility. But there are, if you're alluding to what has to be done, you know, we operate the court. We operate currently, at least, OES. We have civil responsibilities and court security responsibilities. Patrol is not technically a, a responsibility, or at least not a requirement of the Sheriff's Department, but it's something you can't not do in my eyes. So it, it's all encompassing. You have a lot of things, dispatch. But I see them all as requirements of the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, thank you.
All right. With that, I'll, I'll ask the next question. What are the three most important values that you demonstrate as a leader? And tell us a story that demonstrates each of these leadership values.
So as a leader, I think the three things, there's a, there's some obvious integrity, leadership ability, and ability to, to build and maintain relationships. Respect is a big word that goes along with there. As we talk about these things, you're going to hear some, some words repeat themselves. You might get sick of them by the end of this, but relationships and respect are two big words for me as far as what I think a leader is, what a manager is, and things that I rely on and have relied on in my past. As far as examples, for me, I think my, my entire career is, is filled with examples like that. I've built relationships throughout. It's what I do, it's what I feel is necessary. I'm, I'm confident if you talk to, I see Commander Fensler and Chief Rasmussen, again, half the command staff of the Sheriff's Department. I'm comfortable if you talk to anybody about the relationships that I build and maintain that, that they will agree with that. It goes to the community as well. I've been, I'll, I'll tell a story and I, I apologize to Chair Grant. I'm going to date him a little bit and date myself a little bit, but some, probably 20, 25 years ago, as a young sergeant, I remember having a discussion in the parking lot of the Robinson Ranch area, Casino. I think you just got out of the military and were assuming a leadership role with the, with the tribe. And we had a long discussion, and I remember thinking, yeah, this is a leader, is going to be a future leader. I think of myself the same way. I need this relationship. And we built that. And I'd like to think, disagree if you want, but I'd like to think here, some quarter century later, we had that same relationship and it's worked for both of us. And that's, that's how I've survived and how I've succeeded, is building relationships. Thank you.
My turn?
Yes.
All right, my turn. Hi. Please describe your management style, including the steps you typically take to build an effective team.
You know, management styles always, I've asked that question on the other side of these interviews hundreds of times, probably. And, and there's a lot of, a lot of popular answers, a lot of cliche answers. I lead from the front. I lead by, by example. I lead with respect. And all those things are true, and I think I have all those. But my style is, is really more of a personality than a style. And, and for me, the, the steps are simple and I've kind of already gone over them. I mean, I have, I have personality traits that I think have given me some success. I, I'd like to think I had some natural ability to start with, but again, I have 30 years to have improved upon those, those leadership, leadership type of skills. So my personality suits it. Even keeled, I don't overly react on emotion. I'm, you know, I, I can listen to people, read people. And so building, again, the steps are just, they come natural to me. I, I talk to people, I listen to people, and I have ability to, I think, understand and, and see what motivates people and see what shuts people down.
Describe your experience with developing and managing a budget.
My, my experience began actually with the Sheriff's Office, probably at the, the lieutenant, and then certainly more at the, the captain and chief of staff level collective, are really team, team effort there. We would always get together as different units and, and go over what's needed, what's in the budget, changes that were, that were necessary. So more of a team effort there. That's one of the real benefits I have of, of taking the position I'm in currently. As the department head, I'm intimately involved with budgets from, from day one. It's something I had to learn. We didn't have a finance person, I remember, for the first year. So Admin was nice enough to loan me someone, at the time it was Jeff Ryan, to help me out with a budget. So I became pretty intimately involved with budget from day one and have, have had hands-on since then. I, I've reviewed the Sheriff's Department budget fairly recently and certainly larger, bigger numbers, more units, but it's really the same, just at a different level. And it's something I'm already familiar with. You know, I'm not going to lie, the, the basics of budgets is something I completely understand and I get. And we talk and we figure out what's needed. Sometimes hard decisions have to be made. But then there's some complex account issues and stuff, and that's why I have Stephen Carter on speed dial. I do have, again, I believe, probably more experience than, than, with, with budgets than you're going to find any other candidate.
Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Describe your experience with grant writing and grant management.
We have, in my current position, we rely heavily on state funds, but most of them are, are out of assembly bills or Senate bills. are, are out of assembly bills or senate bills. And I had some experience with, with some grants back in my SO days, the, I can't remember the name of the grant, but mostly just pursuing state funding. And that, for us, involves reporting and stat keeping. I do it every year for SB 678, AB 109, different assembly bills. There's, there's state and grant funds that come with that, so my experience in that is with, with writing the proposals, and basically tracking and completing audits and updates, including stats and, and reports on those revenue streams.
All right. Supervisor Sbatie.
So the next question, what experience do you have with addressing staff vacancies, recruitment, and retention? And are there any creative ideas that you have in mind to address this issue?
Well, unfortunately, if you're a department head in Lake County, you have experience, right? We've had a little, little bit of success, I think, not a little bit, but quite a bit of success, I think, in probation. We're a law enforcement entity, and I think this board knows we're in some times that are kind of unprecedented, especially in law enforcement. It's not just law enforcement, but I think pretty hard hit, and it's not a local thing, it's not a state thing, it's a federal thing. Really no easy answers, but I do think I have some, some ideas. I have some, a kind of a multi-pronged approach to the staffing issue. I can tell you, if appointed to this position, it's going to be my goal, my primary goal is, will be to improve the staffing situation at the Sheriff's Office. And I've been pretty good at achieving goals in the past, so I think I'll be okay. But I know that the Sheriff's Department has been very innovative, they're looking, they're doing things that, that hasn't been done in the past, they're visiting academies, they have a presence online, they're doing a lot of good things. So my first, the first approach I'll have, and I think is probably the most important, is a smooth transition. You know, when you're talking about staffing, and you're talking about a change of leadership, that can be a traumatic thing, you know, it can be, it can create stress. The wrong person going in and leading a department, or leading without maybe some skill, you could lose people right away, and that's the first thing we can't have. We can't have, I'm here, I left that job for the same kind of thing, someone coming in, I think, without skill, and a number of people did. So first and foremost, we can't have that, and I think, I provide that. It's one of the pluses I think I give, is I think I can come in without that stress, and with the comfort and the confidence level. First thing, obviously, I'm not in there right now, is to evaluate exactly what is being done. I'm an inside-out kind of person when it comes to the staffing issues. I think a lot of it has to do with morale and quality of the job that you, that you have, and that you provide, and the quality of the work environment. Lake County has some things to offer, you know, this, the lake, excuse me, and then the quality of the work that you do, you know, how, how you're treated. Those are the things that I focus on, and I think I've done well out of them, I think they positively impacted my department. We, probation right now has actually grown in staffing since the last, since five years ago, I looked at our allocated positions. We do have still a vacancy rate of about 17 to 19%, but we've maintained pretty well in a very tough time. I think we've lost two people in the last year to other, to outside employment, and that's, that's pretty good for us. And both of those we lost to, to different, different professions, so they actually just left the profession. That's what I hope to bring to the SO, is again, go in, smooth transition, evaluate, and then see what we can do to, to improve. It's very likely that I could, I could bring some stuff we're doing, it's also very likely I'm going to see some stuff they're doing, I'm going to ship back to patrol, excuse me, to probation, and, and try to improve both. So that, that facet, I have some other ideas. I think the long-term with law enforcement and staffing is an image issue. You know, we, law enforcement unfortunately has always struggled with that. You could have a million men and women doing a million good things every day, and you'll never hear about it, but if one does something wrong, you will hear about it. Of course, we always go through that, and we've gone through some, some tough times with the, you know, defund the police was popular for a minute, and so that harm to our image has to be, has to be corrected, and I think you start with the youth. I'm very into programs that involve young, young people. I think that's how we change our image. A number of ways to do that, a lot of you probably see the Sheriff's Department easy ups, and the probation easy ups, had a lot of, a lot of functions, fair, that kind of thing, and that's positive, but I really like the school resource officer position. It's not really a common thing, I think, with probation, but we now, we didn't have it when I was coming in, but we have three officers, we have school districts that are, that are pursuing us, they want more, and as we could get the staffing available to do it, we would do that. I just see those kind of opportunities, and don't get me wrong, those aren't things that are going to solve our staffing issues in the next couple of years, but those are moves towards the future that, that change the image, and, you know, I talked to my wife, she's a teacher, and she's a teacher at kindergarten, and so she gets these kids, it's very likely their first real social, you know, interaction with a lot of people, and she'll tell me, you know, school resource officer, an officer will come visit, and they kind of cringe and back off, and they almost show fear, and, you know, it breaks my heart, because that's a kid who's been through something already in a young life that they shouldn't, or has been told something that probably isn't true. The bright side of that is by the end of the year, those same kids will be hovering around school resource officer, because they know that we're putting men and women in there that, that will protect them, they want to do it for the right reasons, and I think those positive image things are what we got to look for in the future. One other thing, and I've said this to this board before, I'm an optimist in this area. I think we've gone through some hard times with, with image, I think that's a pendulum. I think COVID didn't help, it changed the work environment for everybody, but, you know, this board has made some really, really positive moves with enhancements to salary and benefits, really creative with, with recruitment and retention, with the salary, or with the signing bonuses. Those are things that I didn't see in 30 years here, and I've said it before, I believe it, and I'm not just a blind optimist, I'm a pessimist actually at a lot of things, but with this, I'm confident. Those, those steps are going to bear fruit, and I think we will turn this around.
So I do have a follow-up question, and hopefully we can have a brief response, because I don't want to take too much time on it. What efforts can you make or will you make to help diversify your staffing as you move forward into dealing with the vacancies? What efforts can be made? We are getting a more diverse population here in Lake County, and representation, at least to me, and I believe also to the board, is important to have, what efforts can be made?
Funny, I think I have a pretty good advantage in that area, too. My, I run a department, I have for a decade, and we're very diverse. We are currently more than 50% female, we're currently more than 50% of individuals that identify as a racial minority. So I think I've already achieved what you're looking for. And to be honest, there's nothing special I did. We, we welcome everybody, we treat everybody equally, we value our applicants from the start, we have a strong Hispanic community, and we have a strong Hispanic representation in my department. I think people talk, I think people understand, you know, they have friends, and they know that, that our department is going to treat you right. And that's really all you have to do, and that's really all I'd have to do with the Sheriff's Department, I think. It's, I don't know how innovative you have to be, you just have to, to be open and fair from the start.
Thank you.
All right. What level of engagement have you had with staff development, and developing and providing public safety training? I know you mentioned this, but if you can go a little deeper into it.
Well, as a department head, you're ultimately responsible for the training your people get, so, and staff development's always been something we've been interested, Sheriff Martin's always been interested in as well, and we've talked about maybe developing some courses internally for, for county leadership and management. But the one benefit law enforcement's always had is a lot of the, the requirements out there for training, you know, it's one of the only jobs where we don't really have a choice, we're going to send you in probation for 40 hours a year, for the SO, 24 every two years, to formalized approved training. So you get a lot of that, so a lot of it comes from what you choose to send somebody. You know, the training's out there and available to develop supervision, to develop management. We have supervisory leadership institute and supervisory leadership academy for different, ones for post, ones for STC. I believe in those things. We personally, in my department, send everybody who either becomes a supervisor or is even on track to those courses, and they're important. So I think it's just recognizing that it's, that it's needed, and then taking advantage of the, of the resources that are already there.
Describe your experience with personnel issues such as underperforming staff and/or conflict between employees. And although you very graciously declined to discuss the situation with the prior sheriff, that was a conflict, and as one of the new kids on the black block, I don't mind if you dive into that just a little bit, because there are people probably tuning in who may not have some history on that. So describe your experience with personnel issues, underperforming staff, and conflict between employees.
Well, the previous sheriff thing, there is no quick dive into that, I'll just give you that right now, so I'll kind of move on to. Again, I, I've been at the supervisory level and above for most of my 30-year career. So as soon as you're a sergeant, you technically start dealing with personnel issues, you know, you're in charge of the performance of your, your group, and that grows all the way to the ultimate decision as a department head, which is unfortunately sometimes termination, that can be about the most serious. And Skelly, my kind of brief answer is, I've been involved intimately with every step of it. I've conducted internal affairs investigations, I can't tell you how many times with the Sheriff's Department, and then a few with probation. I've been the management-level person who would do the notice of proposed on a disciplinary action, I've been the person who would do notice of final. I've given final, and I've sat on numerous Skelly hearings afterwards, so, again, intimately familiar with, with personnel, actions, decisions, and conflicts, it's just something you, you have to do. It doesn't always have to be pleasant, I'll tell anybody, if you ask me my most stressful moment, or things like, it's probably going to be a personnel issue in management. But like everything, you do it collaboratively, you, you be willing to talk to people, I'm smart enough to know I'm not that smart sometimes, so I'll listen to other people, but yeah, I'm very familiar with pretty much any step you want to talk about in the disciplinary or personnel process.
Please describe your experience with emergency planning and disaster recovery.
As a Sheriff's Department employee, from the time I believe I was a supervisor, we were taking ICS courses. I've been intimately involved with the EOC, have acted as the operations section chief for many, many years. So on that side of it, I have a lot of experience with, with disasters, with the planning, with the emergency operation system. As far as the, the outside of it, I guess you'd say, or like Sheriff Martin's current role, that will be new to me. I've had a lot of discussions with the sheriff about that responsibility, I understand it, but again, I believe I have really intimate knowledge of the system and how it works, I understand that. There was a time in our department where the sheriff had the idea, not Sheriff Martin, but Sheriff Mitchell, had the idea that our entire department was going to run off a command system, like, kind of didn't work, but bottom line is, as far as the OES office and emergency management, and the EOC operation, I think I have a good, good knowledge of.
All right. Supervisor Simon.
All right. Describe your relationship with other public safety agencies, and if needed, how would you improve those relationships?
I've kind of mentioned it already, I think that, I look at that as probably my greatest strength. I've been building relationships from the start, and this position as department head has allowed me to continue that. I would feel confident if you, if you were to talk to Sheriff Martin, Chief Rasmussen, Commander Fensler, Pasco from Fish and Wild, anybody, about our relationships and the relationships that I've built, I'm confident that I could call any one of them right now, and if I needed mutual aid or help, they would give it to me, and the reason they would is because they already know they can call me and do the same thing, and I have. We do get requests for assistance, and I'd like to think everybody who's dealt with me knows that they'll get it, or they'll get whatever I can. As far as improving on it, I kind of mentioned, it's something I've done from the start, so it's something I'll continue to do. My improvement on it will just be expanding it.
Supervisor Sbatie.
Next question, I know it's my question, but I think it's one of the most important ones. How would you engage the community? What creative strategies would you use to address neighborhood concerns, and what topics would you discuss?
This is one area, I think Sheriff Martin has kind of set the bar, and it's something that, I'm not going to lie, it's going to be a challenge for me to meet, to do what he does. I'm not a, a you-too selfie guy, and he is, sorry, I don't mean that. We're different in that way. But one thing Sheriff Martin has taught me is the importance of it, and the importance of community engagement, and the importance of being there. So my plan there is to just continue what's already happening, and hopefully grow myself as I do it, and continue to improve upon it. It's going to be hard to do, it's really not my personality, it's likely to look different for me, there might be other people on camera, but again, I've learned a lot, and my plan is, is to continue that outreach, and have, have that community involvement, and keep those lines of communication flowing.
Thank you.
All right. What familiarity do you have with any new state/federal legislation proposed to begin next year, and please describe?
Well, the newest legislation in law enforcement, at least for the Sheriff's Office, and again, I've kept up with this a bit, we have new legislation in the probation world daily, it seems, and certainly in California, a lot of it's geared towards law enforcement. I've had a lot of valuable meetings with Sheriff Martin about current legislation or new legislation, and most of it, to me, seems to be geared towards use of force and transparency, those kind of issues, and to be honest, I don't have a problem with it. My feeling with law enforcement is that 99% of the things we do are good things, and the more people get to see those things, the better. I don't want just the bad stuff out there, so when you're talking about, I think it's SB 2, you know, reporting certain things to post, to be overseen by a state agency, doesn't bother me in the least. And you're talking about having to post use of force issues, you know, any use of force with a firearm, a great bodily issue in the 30-day posting, again, Sheriff Martin has a, has a really good platform to post that, doesn't bother me in the least. I mean, we deal with difficult things in California, a lot of them, I'm going to say I don't agree with. I, you know, we've had propositions in the past, you know about them, 47, 57, that may reduce what is a crime, and bottom line in law enforcement is, it's law enforcement, so you enforce the law. We don't always have to agree with legislation, don't always have to agree with, with changes, but it is our job to act on them and enforce them. So yeah, most of the new stuff I see, you know, you have the increase of age to 21 to recruits, I don't see a problem with that. In all my years, I only remember one person ever hired as a cop under 21. That person's now the Plaster County Sheriff, by the way, but it was fun back in the day, because we could joke with them about not being able to do bar checks, you know, he's under 21. But again, I don't have a problem with that. In 2025, as I understand it, that'll, that'll increase the education necessary for new recruits. There could be, aside of that, you could look at, you know, we're struggling so much now, that if you increase those minimum requirements, you could struggle a little bit. But I have a kid who wants to be a cop, and I'm making, I'm making him get his education first, so I'd be a hypocrite if I didn't say those things were a good idea. So I guess the, maybe not so short answer, but the answer is, I don't have a problem with any legislation that I see, it's just part of the job, things change every day.
Thank you. If appointed, what do you plan to achieve in six months and one year?
As I said, my primary goal to go in, more of a longer term, but is to improve the staffing level of the department, see what I can do about that. As far as, as short-term goals, the first goal, I've kind of mentioned that, and I think it's the most important, is transition. I don't think we can afford a bad transition, you know, so to get in within six months, I've been out of the department for a few years, so I'm very confident in the management, leadership, all that, the department head stuff, I don't worry about, but things change, there'll be a lot of things to learn. So my initial goal is to go in, and that'd probably be the six-month goal, is to have met with every command staff level, that will lead to meetings with, with supervisory level, and maybe frontline as needed, but that's the first thing, is to learn the department. Confident in everything else, but there's a lot of new people there. It's funny, the command staff, I know all of them, but half the new young deputies are, they'll be new to me, so. Six months, learning everything, by a year, I'd like to have made some significant improvement in staffing.
What do you think your greatest challenge in assuming the sheriff's coroner role will be?
Well, we've mentioned it, it's going to be a broken record, but it is staffing. I think we're facing, oh, thank you, you saw me running out of water, dry voice. So, and I don't, I don't want to sit here and repeat myself, I've gone over a lot of my plan, what I think, what I think I can do, but those, those are the biggest issues facing law enforcement, I think, nationwide. Again, it's not, it's not local or state, we're all going to be in this challenge, so we all have to be able to do things better than someone else, you know, we're going to, we're going to have to make this a better work environment, we're going to have to make, or get people to understand what a great place Lake County is to live, and then when we, when we do get people, we got to focus on retention, we got to keep our people. They're out there, I've mentioned my son, I'm going to use him as an example, and I'm biased, I'm going to give it, obviously, but, you know, he's a 20-year-old, intelligent young man, he's got a conscience and a heart, and wants to be a cop, he's wanted to be a cop since he knew what a career was, and as someone who's done that for my career, I got to tell you, it's scary, you know, and it, sometimes I'm like, I don't want to, I don't want people to have to deal with some stuff I've had to deal with, especially my kid. But again, I'd be a But again, I'd be a hypocrite. I was the same way and his heart's in the right place. And I use him as an example because those people are out there. So we have to find them and keep those people. Hope that answered that question without repeating too much.
All right. So that covers all the questions that we have. Just wanted to ask briefly if you had any questions for us?
I don't really have any questions. I'd like to thank you for your time, of course. I know you all have a difficult decision and there's a lot of pressure to make the right decision on something like this. I've never been in your shoes, so. And it's posted. I know the only other applicant and you're not going to hear me say a bad word about it. You don't have a bad choice here. I truly believe that. I think I'm the better choice simply because of the life experience, the position I'm in right now, department head experience. I just think I bring a little more right now and again, things just line up, not just for me, but for the county and the department. So that's where I'd leave you with. Again, thank you for your time.
Any final comments from?
Well, just a procedure question and we have a little bit of time, so we don't have to take the full hour, but if there were one or two follow-up questions any of the board members wanted to make, I have one or two. I have them written down, so I can ask the other candidate. But I was wondering if the board and the candidate would allow me the privilege of asking a follow-up question or two.
I think everyone's all right with it as long as you ask the next candidate.
Okay. And these are not trick questions. These just came off the top of my head. So I think you already mentioned transparency. You can't follow in Sheriff Martin's shoes. Nobody can. I won't even ask that question, but I think you mentioned in your bio, you had previously done some cannabis enforcement. So certainly over the years, with the passage of Proposition 64, criminal and civil enforcement of cannabis-related crimes and violations has become more challenging and more complex. State and county laws can be confusing for the public to understand. Compliance and enforcement work can be short-circuited by short-staffing and lack of coordination between agencies. What is your understanding of the current state of cannabis enforcement by the Sheriff's Department? And what changes, if any, are needed to build confidence in the county's overall compliance and enforcement strategies?
I think you kind of mentioned what is key there when you talk about the laws can be confusing and that kind of thing. To me, the big component that I see in the future is most important is education. This is an area, and again, Sheriff Martin and I have had discussions. I think he has a good process and a good theory about this. The focus should be on grows that do other harm, you know? Big organized crime grows that involve environmental crimes, water diversion, they hurt our forests, human trafficking, things like that have to be the focus. The voters have spoken and that is another, another one of those examples of we're law enforcement. We don't, you don't always have to agree. We just got to, we got to get what the law is and we enforce that. And there's obviously things like discretion and resource, just how many resources you have. But again, I think the big key is the education component. We're still going to focus on those big grows that do harm to our society, but all in all, the rest is, there's been a big shift. We're not going to be out chasing you for seven plants because you're only supposed to have six or something. So I think it's all common sense. So you big grows near a school or a daycare or a park or something, maybe that you focus on. Everybody else is going to be more of the education side of things and I foresee continuing pretty much what Sheriff Martin has as a philosophy, involvement with code enforcement to educate people. There was a time when if you had a pretty large grow, hey, you go make an arrest, cut it down. Those times are over. And now you go and you ensure that someone is trying to be legal and if they're not, then you help them and you educate them and try to get them on the right process. So I think you kind of mentioned yourself, that education component is the most important thing going forward.
All right. One more. Just one more from us.
Fairly recently, this board approved the Sheriff Department's use of automated license plate readers to help track suspect vehicles as they move about the county. I know City of Lakeport did. In my hometown of Fresno, gun discharges are detected with automated shot spotter systems. Facial recognition technology is widespread and growing rapidly, both on public and private computer systems. For law enforcement, technology offers important new tools for detecting and solving crimes, but it also raises privacy concerns for individuals and social concerns about creating and funding basically kind of a surveillance state. As sheriff, how would you balance the privacy concerns of county residents with the increasing use of technology to identify and track people and suspects?
Yeah, I think that's always been a little concern in society. You've always had the kind of big brother fear, but you're right, the technology is something that cannot be ignored. It solves crimes, helps people. I'll go back to transparency on this. I mean, if you're using technology and why you're using it for, if you're willing to share and explain and be open about it, that's really all you can do. I guess that's an education issue too. You have to be willing to be open and educate the public, but let them know.
And so with that, just want to make one final comment. Thank you very much for opening up and discussing this publicly. Got to learn a little bit more about you, learn what your real first name is. That was something I didn't know that I didn't know, but really appreciate you applying and taking the time today and getting to know you a little bit better.
Thanks, I appreciate it. I was talking to Sheriff Crandall about that. It's funny, I think they used my full name for a service award one time and I had half my department here, they didn't know who it was. Man, is there another house? Yeah. And I'm a third, by the way. There's no fourth. My son's not the same. We stopped that.
Okay. Well, I think one last thing, Ms. Grant, I need to open it up for public comments or questions or statements, something like that.
You can open it up for public comments, but you don't have to do it one and then next. You can do it at the end, you can do it now and again, comments only.
I think we'll do it at the end when we come to that.
It's up to your board.
I think that would be the best way to go about it, is when we were ready to make our decision, we'll open it up. Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, so we'll go from there on that. All right. Rob?
That's it.
Thank you very much, yes.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Did you want more? Because we can't.
Well, I'm here now.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. And so we are at 11:06. Does anybody need a short break or do you want to move forward?
I think we said 11:15. Probably need to stick to 11:15.
Let's take a short break and come back at 11:15 and let's go for it. All right, welcome back from the break and as stated before, we're going to move on to the next interview. And this 11 o'clock item is the sheriff coroner interview with Lucas J. Bingham, Lieutenant. And so with that, we'd like to welcome you to this interview and thank you for applying as well. This is a process we're going to go through. We're going to ask by supervisory districts and so what you're going to notice is Moke will start out, Bruno will go second, therefore, we'll go from there. I know that there was a couple of questions added and so we'll have those as well. And at the end, you can either ask your questions or you can provide a statement or something along the lines, so we can get more input from you as well. So with that, if there's anything you wanted to start out with or anything like that, we'll get right to it with Supervisor Simon.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to start or did you just, do you have something to say as well?
Well, I just wanted to thank the board for the time. I think this is a pretty historic event in the community, is my history with the Sheriff's Office and prior to that, I'm not aware of a sheriff being appointed before, so I think it's a heavy weight on the board. Make the determination for the future of the Sheriff's Office for at least the next two years until the voters can come together and vote in an election. So thank you for taking that time and that responsibility.
All right. And Lieutenant, if it's possible to get closer to the microphone, just to make sure that everyone in the audience and on Zoom can hear.
Is that better? Yeah, there we go.
And thanks for making us more nervous.
All right. So we'll go ahead and start then. Supervisor Simon, whenever you're ready for it.
Welcome, Lucas.
Welcome.
And once again, thank you for applying for the position. I'm going to go right into it. I'll do it just as I did with the previous applicant. My name is Moke Simon, District 1 Supervisor. My district is in the unincorporated areas. It runs from Anderson Springs, Middletown, Lower Lake, Clear Lake and all the way out to the county lines down Butts Canyon. So welcome. Please provide an overview of your education, qualifications and experience.
Okay. As Supervisor Simon and Supervisor Pies can know, I grew up in Lake County. I graduated from Middletown High School. When I graduated from high school, while I was in high school, I volunteered along with my parents with the Sheriff's Office Search and Rescue and Sheriff's Office Posse. When I graduated high school, I had a choice to either go to college or join the Air Force and serve my country. I chose to join the Air Force. After serving the Air Force, I came back and attended the Napa Valley College Police Academy. And after graduating the Police Academy, I was fortunate enough to be hired by the Sheriff's Office. My entire career has always been about learning something new. I feel that if you become, you stop learning what you don't know today for tomorrow, you become stagnant. And I've always, it's kind of a joke around the office, but I say all the time that I'll take any training that's available to me, even if it's underwater basket legal. If it's available, I'm going to take it because you can always learn something. There's always something that I don't know today that I'm going to learn for tomorrow. And so I've always had that mentality. Since I've been with the Sheriff's Office, I've had over 2,400 hours of post-certified training and that doesn't include non-post-certified training. Within the Sheriff's Office, I actually obtained my California hazardous materials specialist certification for a while in the Sheriff's Office as part of the county hazardous materials team. I've achieved every certificate that Post offers. I recently completed the California Post Executive Development Course, which is the last certification course within the Post system. And that's generally reserved for police of chiefs and seconds in commands and I was able to secure a slot in that for a lieutenant position and attend that course. I completed that course approximately two weeks ago. It was a phenomenal course. In that time, I was given the opportunity to also attend coroner's investigator training through Post and I've obtained my Post Basic, Intermediate and Advanced Coroner's Investigative I'm also been selected for and have a slot for the 2024 FBI National Academy, which is a 10-week leadership course held at Quantico, Virginia. It's a highly competitive course. I've been trying for the last three years to get selected for that academy and I was actually selected, I got notice in October that I was selected for 2024. On top of that, recently, within about two years, I decided to go back and obtain my bachelor's degree. It has always been a goal of mine, but you know, work, kids, family, money, it becomes sometimes hard when you get into life. But now that my kids are older, my son's 16, my daughter's 14, they're starting to kind of live their lives and I have more time on my hands, so I decided to go get my bachelor's degree. It's always something I've wanted to obtain. I started at Mendocino College about two years ago and recently in August, I transferred to California Coastal University to finish my degree with California Coastal University. And as long as everything goes well, I should have my degree in about 15 months. Like I said, training and education has always been something for me that I've always strived for because I will admit that I don't know everything. And the more I can learn, it makes me better and makes me better to serve our community and serve within the Sheriff's Office.
All right, thank you.
I'll take the second question. Thank you very much for applying.
Thank you.
I'll also state what I've stated before in the previous applicant. I appreciate the fact that we have more than one applicant in front of us today, so we can compare and contrast and make the best decision for our communities, difficult choices, you stated earlier, that we have in front of us. So why did you apply for the position of sheriff coroner?
I've been asked that a lot and to be honest with you, it took me a while to come to that decision. I think that if you ask anybody in the department or anybody that knows me, I will be honest that being the sheriff was never a goal of mine. It's not something that I've ever said that I wanted to do or had to do in my career. I always wanted to at least achieve the rank of captain within the department. And then when I started to hear that Sheriff Martin was thinking about retiring and then announced his retirement, I had a lot of thinking to do and I had to sit back and really consider where the department is at and where the community is at. As I said, I grew up in Lake County. I left Lake County and joined the Air Force and I think as most kids, when they leave Lake County, they want to go look at the world. The grass is greener, always greener on the other side of the fence, that kind of mentality. And I was fortunate enough in the military to live in other places in the country and then overseas and visit those places and realized that I truly liked Lake County. And I came back here and was fortunate enough to get hired here. I'm invested in the community. I'm invested in the community succeeding and continue to improve in the future. And after 24 years in the Sheriff's Office, I'm invested in the Sheriff's Office. I want the Sheriff's Office to succeed. I want it to improve and grow in the future. I have about eight years left in my career, if not maybe a little bit more, depends on how things go. And I have the time to make sure that that's going to happen within the Sheriff's Office. I've seen the Sheriff's Office at lows and I've seen it at highs. I think we're at a high right now. I think we have a level of trust and transparency with our community that I don't think we've ever shared before. And that's large in part, you know, the sheriff gets a lot of the praise and a lot of the blame within the department, but I think that's large in part because of the culture that's been instilled in the Sheriff's Office and the day-to-day operations of our staff, the deputies, the deputy corrections and our professional staff. They go out there every day and they do the job, they do the right thing and they try to make a difference in our community. And I think that's given us a level of trust and transparency and commitment to our community that we were lacking, as a lot of you know, in the early 2010 to 14 era. We struggled and we've gotten through that and we're a better place today and I want to see that continue. I truly have a desire to see that continue and improve into the future. And I don't want to leave this career and look back and see that things have deteriorated or gotten worse with our department and the service that we provide to the community. I don't want to see that happen. And I don't want to look back and think that, well, what if I did or what if I could or I should have done this, I could have made a difference. And you know, as I said, I think the board has a very difficult decision and don't take what I'm saying to mean that I'm not going to continue serving the community and doing the best I can for the Sheriff's Office and the community. I will, in whatever capacity I can serve in the Sheriff's Office. But I believe that I have the skills to lead the department towards the future and that is my intent.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, so I have a follow-up question. Is it your intention to run for the Sheriff's Office at the next election?
It is. It is my intention to seek the office of the sheriff in the 2024 election. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I have another follow-up question. We have state law that kind of defines the sheriff, the mandates and so on. We've also had experiences with sheriffs, so we have an idea of what the role is. What is your view of what the role or what a sheriff is meant to be for a community?
Well, the sheriff is the entity within the county that protects the constitutional rights of its citizens. That's the primary role of the sheriff. It's to serve the community, to ensure that their rights are preserved, that we are public safety and it's to basically follow the law. The sheriff should be nonpartisan. It should be to serve every community member within Lake County. That's the role of the sheriff. There's a lot of things that are codified in government code, I believe it's 2,600, that mandates civil jail, civil services and so on. But I think the primary role of the sheriff is that of the coroner and that of the constitutionally-elected officer to protect those constitutional rights. And then within the department, the responsibility of the sheriff is to act as a leader, to show the department, to guide the department, to make sure that the principles, values, vision and mission of the department are carried out for the betterment of the community. You know, at the top of the pyramid, you could say that the responsibility of the sheriff in the Sheriff's Office is preservation of life. That's the number one thing that we're responsible for and I think we've seen that in the disasters and all of the things that we've lived through. But next to that is our responsibility is to the community, to serve the community, to resolve problems and solve problems before they become larger problems, but simply put, to do what we can to make the lives of our community members better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, that's my question. I'd like to, uh, just note that I, uh, that's a very military thing to say underwater basket weaving. We're, we're taught that at, uh, at A-CAP when we get out, so I heard that said before.
Yes.
So, uh, you mentioned leadership, um, and so my question is about that. What are the three most important values you demonstrate as a leader? And, uh, tell us a story that demonstrates each of these leadership values.
Um, I've, I've tried my entire career, starting in the military, to be a student of leadership. And honestly, I think my idea of leadership has changed as I've gone up the ranks. Um, within the Sheriff's Office, um, I have, um, I've been an FTO, I've been a, uh, part of the Sheriff's Office SWAT team for, um, 22 years now. I worked up from, um, a team member to a team leader as a detective, to the team sergeant, to I am now the team commander, and I run the entire crisis response unit for the Sheriff's Office. Um, I've had different roles within that in leadership. I promoted to sergeant and had a, uh, supervised a patrol shift. I supervised a narcotics unit, um, and then now as a lieutenant, I supervise, um, not only the crisis response unit, but our PIO, our Community Engagement Unit, um, and then our volunteer program. And so there's, there's a lot of, you know, kind of moving parts there. I think for me, my concept of leadership and, and what a leader should be is it kind of goes back, and I'll use this analogy, um, a leader should be able to come in and give directions and be able to walk away and know that that mission's going to be carried out. And go to the military, um, you know, cargo plane, a cargo captain's going to come in and he's going to give the mission that we're flying from point A to point, point B today. And he knows that his crew is trained, experienced, they have the tools and the authority to carry out that mission, so he doesn't have to worry about that, or they don't have to worry about that. They simply get in the aircraft and they fly it somewhere else. Um, for me, guiding, directing, and, and mentoring is probably the three most important things, especially in law enforcement as far as, um, leadership goes. Um, at times in law enforcement during emergencies and critical incidents like, um, CRU callouts, sometimes you have to be directive. You don't have time to guide or mentor. You have to give direction, you have to give orders, and if you've properly trained your, um, subordinates and you've given them the tools and the authority to carry out that mission, the job's going to get done. In other instances, a leader needs to be more guiding. You need to, to give direction, clear details and timelines, and then step back and allow your people to work through the problem and resolve the problem. Because by doing that, you're, you're involving everybody in the process, but you're allowing them to grow and resolve that, that problem within the department or within whatever issue you're dealing with. And then I think mentoring is, is extremely important in leadership. You have to bring up your, your, um, people that are, that are behind you, that are underneath you, and that's kind of a leadership development and also a mentoring, um, kind of, um, development where you're providing them with those tools, you're making sure they get to the right trainings, you're making sure that they understand their authority and where their authority lies and where it, where it ends within the department. To give examples, I, I gave several examples with the Crisis Response Unit as far as a directive leader goes. Um, I've had several incidents, including, um, most recently, we had a hostage situation in, in Clear Lake where we assisted the Clear Lake Police Department on a mutual aid event, um, where, um, a father took his, um, son hostage for a while. We were on that for just under 30 hours, rotated out several teams. And then when it came down to the critical moments, um, I gave a direct order, um, to my team members to remove the child from the house, an, uh, opportunity to present it itself, and we were able to, to extract that, that, uh, young man from the residence and, and get him away from his father and then safely take his father into custody. So that would, that would be, um, um, on the directive side of things in, in my, uh, leadership idea.
Thank you.
Guiding is, is, I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, yeah, good, continue, please.
Um, on, on the guiding side of things, um, I also, I, I said, I oversee the PIO and Community Engagement Officer, um, for the Sheriff's Office, which we just recently hired. Uh, we recognized a need for that, and myself and Lieutenant Polich worked together to create that position to alleviate one of our deputies and get them back on the street. Um, and with her, some, some of the projects I give her are, are kind of a guiding, um, stance with her is that I provide her with the information, I provide her with the end goal, the reason. I think it's very important to provide people with a reason as to why they're doing what they're doing. Without a reason, people struggle sometimes with, with the project or, or the process if they don't understand the reason and, and the eventual outcome of what we're looking for. Provide that information and then just occasionally check in, make sure that they have the tools, what they need, the equipment to make it happen, and then when the deadline comes, we're there. On the mentoring side, I, I, um, actually have a sergeant who I know wants to be a lieutenant someday, and I've worked with them, I've had several meetings with them and sat down and talked with them about the development that they need to get to this level and the understanding of the, the difference between a, a first-line supervisor and a management. It's, it's different, as, you know, I think most of you guys know, you know, first-line supervisors start sun-down, they're out there, they're the boots on the grounds, they're, they're talking to people, they're making that contact. When you get into management, it's a whole different thing. You're, you're driving the ship, you're making sure that the mission is being accomplished, you're making sure that the, the community is being served appropriately and respectfully and professionally. So it's kind of a change in, in your thought process and what you have to do when you get into management. And so I'm mentoring him and trying, and helping him get to the point where he needs to be providing with information on classes that I think he needs to take. And even to the point where identifying some of his faults. Sometimes people don't want to hear that, but if you're a good leader, you tell people what they need to hear, whether they want to hear it or not, you tell them what they need to hear. Um, and they may not like it, but hopefully they respect it and hopefully they take it and, and they run with it. I think one of the things that, that I value in myself as a leader, and, and, you know, I could talk about failures all day long, but I think one of the things that I value in myself as a leader is that, um, and I said it earlier before we went, uh, back into session, is I, I want information, I want discussion, I want argument, respectfully of course, but, and I want people to challenge my opinions and my ideas. I know that I don't know everything, um, but there is somebody in the department of 120-plus employees that has the knowledge. And if I don't ask for it, and if I don't allow it to happen, then I'm not going to get that knowledge. And so that's kind of my, my leadership philosophy that I've tried to carry out through my career.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll just show you, we're there. I want your full and complete answers, but I also want you to catch your breath and get some water in there. Please, please describe your management style, including the steps you typically take to build an effective team.
I think leadership and management is, is pretty much the same thing. Leadership is, is setting the goals, the examples, all the things that I talked about. Management, on the other hand, is making sure that things are getting done. We're managing that project, we're managing the budget, we're managing our workflow, we're making sure that everything is on time and on, on, um, pace. And then that includes collaborating with whoever we need to collaborate with to accomplish the end results. Um, currently, uh, as an example, I'm working with IT to replace the servers for the Sheriff's Office Body-Worn Camera System. And there's kind of a lot of moving parts there. I'm working with our financial director, I'm working with, with, uh, IT, and then I'm working with our sergeant, who is part of, um, the department, who oversees our, our body-worn camera system to kind of get all of the moving parts together, um, so that we can accomplish this project and replace our agent server system for our body-worn cameras. Um, I think the biggest thing again is the collaboration and making sure that you're communicating with everybody and everybody is communicating with each other so we all know what page we're on. And that goes across the board. It, it's, you know, uh, whether it's internally within the Sheriff's Office, or it's working with probation, or it's working with the local fire departments, it's making sure that we're all together and we're all on the same page, working towards the same goal. And I think that's the responsibility of a manager, and that's kind of my style of, of building that team is, is bringing the people who have the expertise together and then getting that expertise out there so everybody understands the goal of what we're trying to accomplish and then everybody's role in that, um, process to accomplish, um, the end result.
Describe your experience with developing and managing a budget.
Um, so, within the Sheriff's Office, when I was a detective, um, I took over the Sheriff's Office Range Program, and that was my first, um, kind of work with the budget. I was responsible for ordering the equipment and the training materials that are needed for our internal training within the department. Took over the, uh, Range Program when I became a sergeant and kind of still worked within that, that realm. Um, when I promoted to lieutenant, it was kind of a eye-opening, um, information for me. I didn't realize how complicated the budget was, um, how large it was. I mean, the Sheriff's Office budget is, is quite large. I think it's probably the largest in, in the county. I think it's a little over $37 million. We have 22 different budget codes, um, within it. It's, it's fairly large. Um, as a lieutenant, I manage the, um, training, um, budget for the Sheriff's Office, and then I also, uh, manage the equipment budget as the training manager for the Sheriff's Office. Um, one of the things that I've always tried to do, um, in both the equipment and the, the training budget is to ensure that those funds are being spent fiscally responsibly with the understanding that those funds are not the Sheriff's Office, they're, they're the counties, they're the taxpayers, and we need to make sure that those funds are being spent appropriately and to the best service of our community. So when I see training requests, I review all training requests to make sure it fits within our training plan and to make sure that's, it's, the training that we're sending our people to is going to benefit the community. We have deputies that want to go to all kinds of training, and I would love to send deputies to whatever training they would want to go to. Again, I'm, I'm big on training, I'll, I'll go to any training I can. But if a deputy wants to go to Florida to take a training, but we can wait six months and send them to Fresno, well, I know they would rather go to Florida than Fresno, but what's more fiscally responsible for the Sheriff's Office and the county? Send them to Fresno, right? Or if it's a training that doesn't fit within our training plan and it doesn't benefit the Sheriff's Office or the county, we're not going to send them to that. So I keep those things in mind when I'm trying to make those decisions. As far as preparing a budget, I've worked within staff meetings to help prepare the annual budget, mid-budgets for presentation to the board. I've also worked with Mary Beth Strong, which is, uh, part of our professional staff within the Sheriff's Office. Uh, luckily for us, the Sheriff's Office, or fortunately for the Sheriff's Office, um, we have professional staff that is responsible for the day-to-day management of that budget and then the preparation of the annual and mid-budgets to the, uh, Board Supervisors. Ultimately, the sheriff is responsible for that and responsible for the expenditure of those funds. But I think as the sheriff, having that professional knowledge in budgets, it's kind of incumbent on the sheriff to make sure that the, the, again, back to the leadership guidance, how we're going to handle this, make sure that these funds are being spent wisely and appropriately and within the strategic plan for the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you.
Supervisor Simon?
Okay, uh, describe your experience with grant writing and grant management.
So I started my experience with grant management when I was the Narcotics Unit Supervisor. We have the DESEP, DESEP Grant, that's a federally-funded, uh, grant for marijuana enforcement. Um, I was supervisor of the DESEP Coordinator for the Sheriff's Office, so that's kind of where I started with my grant, um, management, working with the feds, working with our financial staff and with the county to manage that and make sure that we're, we're spending that appropriately, um, and completely. Um, I've had a little experience with our off-highway vehicle, um, enforcement grant. Generally, not so much managing it, but helping prepare the final grant, um, paperwork to be submitted, um, at the end of every, um, um, fiscal year as part of that, um, off-highway vehicle enforcement team. And then as a lieutenant, I've actually, um, I've written two grants, um, one of which was accepted by the State of California, one was recently, um, rejected, um, and it's the Gun Violence Reduction Program Grant. It's a, I believe it came in front of the board a little bit over a year ago. I wrote that grant for the Sheriff's Office, and that grant, um, funds, um, a detective position at 75% funding plus some other equipment, um, for a two-year period to focus on the enforcement of armed and prohibited persons within Lake County and removing those firearms from, from those people. And then within that grant, I work with the investigative detective and, uh, Mary Beth to do our annual reporting, um, of that grant and management of that grant throughout the year until it's closed, closure.
All right, thank you.
Next question is, uh, what experience do you have with addressing staff vacancies, recruitment, and retention? And are there any creative ideas that you have in mind that may address this issue?
Oh, that's, that's a big question to unpack. I think, um, my feeling on that and my stances on that is unfortunately, that's an industry-wide problem. I, I don't, I would, I would, um, think we would struggle to find another police department and Sheriff's Office that wasn't struggling with, um, recruitment and retention right now. And I think that's, that's across the workforce. You look at, you know, drivers and retail industries, they're all struggling to find, um, workforce, and I don't think we're any different from that. Some of the ideas that I have to kind of, um, work through that is I think sometimes in law enforcement, we get focused on what we do in law enforcement, the nuts and bolts of our job when we're trying to recruit, um, where we, I think, need to focus on the benefits of what the Sheriff's Office has to offer to, um, people who want to come work here. And, and it's one of those things, and, and I was having a conversation a couple days ago, and they asked, you know, um, with another agency that's quite, quite larger than ours, why have you spent as much time in, in the Lake County Sheriff's Office? And, and again, it goes back to the fact that I grew up here and I like living here and raised my family here. But I, I truly enjoy the Sheriff's Office because we're big enough that we have a lot of things, you can wear a lot of hats, you can do a lot of things in your career, but yet we're small enough where everybody knows everybody. You know, it's a first-name kind of basis within the department. I think sometimes we don't sell that to people, especially some of the people who are trying to recruit from more rural communities that are used to the rural lifestyle and knowing your neighbors and knowing your neighbors that are five houses down. I don't think we do enough within the department to showcase that with the Sheriff's Office. I think we should do that. Um, I think another thing that we can do to improve some of the recruitment is, um, showing some of the diversity and equity within the Sheriff's Office. Um, Sheriff Martin has, has promoted the two, first two female supervisors within the, uh, history of the Sheriff's Office that I'm aware of, um, patrol supervisors. We have the, um, first African-American, um, patrol sergeant, um, currently assigned to the Corps that I'm aware of in the history of the Sheriff's Office. People want to work places where they can see themselves working. And I think showcasing that and showing that this is a place where you can work and you're going to have an equal opportunity to succeed as anybody else here. You're going to have that opportunity, we're going to get you that mentoring, we're going to get you that training, we're going to provide you with the skills that you need to succeed in your career. I think we can do a better job of, of showing that to our recruits and during the recruitment. I think people go to agencies where, where they know they're going to make a decent living, but I think a lot of it also has to do with going someplace where they feel like they're wanted, they feel like they're valued, and they feel like they fit in and they're part of the department. And I think we can do a better job showcasing that.
And so I, I did have a follow-up question, but you somewhat already answered it, but I just want to make sure to ask it in case you wanted to, uh, elaborate a little bit more, is what would be some of the ideas to help increase the diversity within the department as we see our communities diversify and change in what is in, within our community?
Well, I think we, we've, we've taken some steps. The board has definitely helped us in that. We, we did, um, uh, we had a, a need for, uh, female correctional officers, and we did an all-female, um, only recruitment for the Sheriff's Office. We've increased the hiring bonus, um, for the recruitment of female officers within the Sheriff's Office for the Correctional Division, and I think those were all great things. But a- as I said, I think it's, we need to do a better job of promoting that diversity within our department and showing that this is a place you can, you can work. I actually had a phenomenal opportunity to speak with the, um, Chief of the Fairfield Police Department, who came from San Luis Obispo. Um, and she was telling me that when she got hired there, their recruitment of, of females went up by 50%. And she was told, "I came here because I saw myself, I saw the department, I saw myself in that department." "I came here because I saw myself, I saw the department, I saw myself in that department, and I felt I could fit in there and I can work there." And I think that really kind of stuck with me, and we need to do a better job of that. I think we also need to do a better job of reaching out to our community. It's one of those things that I think a lot of people would enjoy this career, but they're not willing to come to us for that career. So reaching out to those, the communities that maybe have a stigma about law enforcement in that community culture and reaching out to some of those people and explaining to them what we do and how they can benefit their communities and how we can serve them better may help get some recruitment into the department.
Thank you.
All right. Did you have, you had another question, right?
I think I'm next.
Oh, no, yeah, it's me. What level of engagement have you had with the staff development and developing and providing public safety training?
Within the Sheriff's Office? I make sure I have that right.
Yeah, it doesn't specify, but it just says, "Level of engagement have you had with staff development and developing and providing public safety training?"
Right. A vast amount, actually. I started as an instructor for the Sheriff's Office in 2006 as a firearms instructor, became a use-of-force instructor. I was an instructor in the Sheriff's Office programs all the way up until 2019 when I promoted to lieutenant. When I promoted to lieutenant, I took over the training manager position for the Sheriff's Office, and I've been responsible for the training and development of training within the Sheriff's Office for the last four years. In that time, we've put on a lot of great trainings. I've coordinated with the Havannah Hall Tribe multiple times to put on PL-280 training, to put on victim advocacy trainings. I've coordinated with outside groups. We recently just had an autism awareness training where it was a train-the-trainer training that we brought here. We brought an instructor here from Florida who's a renowned expert in the field, and we did a train-the-trainer where we opened that up to agencies within Lake County, all law enforcement agencies, DA's office, the police departments. And we did a train-the-trainer training there. We got two of our deputies trained in that awareness, and then we're now currently developing that curriculum to roll out to our entire department, both corrections and sworn side. And we've brought in Twenty-Fourth Century Policing Training, Principles of Policing Training. We've worked with Lake County Office of Education to host those trainings at their facilities in, here in Lakeport. And then we also have several post-certified trainings, three of which I've written personally and gotten post-certified. And to my knowledge, they're the first post-certified courses that Lake County has taught in quite some time. And we actually teach those to other allied agencies. We've had as far away as students from Santa Clara County coming up to take our courses up here before. And I was instrumental in developing those and rolling those out as the training manager.
You can bring the trainer from Fresno? Come on now. Describe your experience with personnel issues such as underperforming staff and/or conflict between employees. I do note in your prior comments, you talked about a period between 2010 and 2014. That was not all that, and I'm sure there've been other periods. So, experience with personnel issues and conflict between employees?
I've had a couple of things. I've dealt with a couple of deputies that were underperforming, and I think it's kind of a double-edged sword when you look at that because I always like to take a broad picture of some employee who's not performing rather than just immediately saying it's their responsibility, it's their fault for not performing correctly. I've always, in the two incidences that I can remember, I've always taken a step back and tried to look at it prospectively and questioned whether we've provided them the training and the tools to properly function or, you know, perform their duties to a meet standards level. In one instance, I felt we didn't, so I worked with that deputy, did a little bit of mentoring, made sure that they were on the same page, and it resolved the problem. It corrected the problem and brought him up to speed. The other deputy, it was more of a deputy personality issue, and then that's where it basically came down to a progressive discipline situation, you know, provide them with where they're failing, identify where they're failing, and put them on a improvement plan, and then monitor that improvement plan. And fortunately, it worked and they became back to a meet standards employee, so it was good. Conflict is inevitable in our job. We have a lot of very type-A people, so that's inevitable. It's going to happen. I found the best thing to do with conflict is to, generally from my experience, most conflict is due from a lack of understanding of the other person's opinion and position and a lack of willingness to listen. And if you take those two things into account and you kind of get that understanding between the two of them and bring them together and have that discussion, you can usually resolve that conflict within the two people. And if you can't, then, and sometimes you can't. Sometimes you have two polar opposite views of something and you're not going to find middle ground, but instilling the understanding that that's okay. We don't all have to think alike. We don't all have to do the same thing. We can have different opinions, but we still can respect each other and we can still work together and we can still carry out the mission.
Please describe your experience with emergency planning and disaster recovery.
I've been involved in a couple of the disasters here in Lake County as part of the EOC. Generally, I'm a Field Operations Commander in the field, running all of the mutual aid support agencies that are coming in for law enforcement services out of the Sheriff's Office command post there. Emergency planning, I've got quite a bit of training in emergency planning, being the SWAT team leader and Crisis Response Unit Commander. That's what we respond to. When the Crisis Response Unit is called out, it's an emergency generally. Just about every instance, we do pre-planned missions, pre-planned events, and that usually, you know, two, three days worth of planning to achieve that. But emergencies are just that. We're rolling out there and we're coming up with a plan as we go based on the totality of the information that we're able to gather at that time. So I had quite a few work within that. Disaster recovery, I have some work with that. I've actually recently worked with the Conocdy Fire Safe Council. They've gotten a grant for the corridor, and I've had a couple of meetings with them and worked with them to bring the Sheriff's Office into that collaboration with the Conocdy Fire Safe Council for that corridor and evacuating. And one of the problems with that area is there's one way in, one way out. So developing plans, we've talked to the council, and one of the plans we came up with is, I actually kind of stole that from Humboldt County, signs for like tsunamis, kind of the same thing in that area. It just points the directions because there's a lot of roads, a lot of arteries, and how are we going to make sure people know how to get out of here, especially if they're here on vacation or they're visiting. And having those signs, it's a great idea. So I've collaborated with them on that and worked with that, and we're still working on things like that in the future. And they've done a great job helping us get out the word of the Zone Haven and our pamphlets and magnets for the Zone Haven program that we have going on.
Describe your relationship with other public safety agencies, and if needed, how would you improve those relationships?
Well, working in Lake County for twenty-four years, I have a pretty good relationship with a lot of the agencies. I know all of the commanders. Chief Rasmussen and I were patrol deputies together way back in the day. He was patrol deputy in Lakeport and I was on the North Shore up here. I've known Chief White. I've had several meetings with Chief White. He has now gone to, I believe, Martinez, I believe Martinez. I know Chief Hobbs. I believe he's the interim chief and potentially the chief. I know him. I've gone to school with him. We actually went to management school together and I have a good working relationship with him, and I've actually coordinated with him several times on different trainings and different events between the counties and then with our mutual aid systems, the crisis response call-outs, and then the fires that we've had. We always embed together and work together for those things. I think honestly, we have a really good working relationship with our allied agencies, with the Clear Lake Police Department, Lake Police Department, and the California Highway Patrol, and Dan Fansler at the California Highway Patrol. We also, during my time as lieutenant, have coordinated with Mendocino County and Sonoma County for tactical assistance, mutual aid in the future. We actually have an agreement with those two agencies that we support them and they support us, especially in the event of a major incident like an active shooter or a major crisis response unit response. We have those agreements with them that we're going to support each other in those events. That's something that's come along since I've been a lieutenant that I was coordinating with.
All right. Thank you.
Next question. In the position of being an elected position, what would you, how would you engage with the community since it's really important since as an elected position? And what creative strategies would you use to address neighborhood concerns and what topics would you discuss?
I think that's very important. I think that's something that Sheriff Martin has done very well that was kind of lacking in the Sheriff's Office for a long time. It kind of goes to the community-oriented policing model of things, the Twenty-Fourth Century Policing Model. They talked about that when I was in the academy back in 1998, and it was kind of an ever-evolving thing, and it's gotten to the point where the simplest way to describe it as a concept is that we shouldn't be policing at our communities, we should be policing with our communities. And that means involving them in that decision-making. We can send a deputy into a community and they can conduct law enforcement in that community, but they don't live there. They don't understand that community. So we need to work with that community, understand their problems and their outcomes and what they want for their communities. I think that's very important. So reaching out to those communities, reaching out to, like on the tribal communities, the tribal chairs and councils and speaking with them and meeting with them and bringing them to the table because they're the stakeholders in their communities. It's very important. Same thing with all of our other districts, the community, town hall, councils, hearing what people have to say. By no means do I think that the Sheriff's Office is perfect. We make mistakes, and I seriously doubt we won't make mistakes in the future. We're humans. But having that human-to-human contact with the community, we can't fix mistakes. I can't fix mistakes within the Sheriff's Office if I don't know about them. So having that community engagement and working with that community to identify those mistakes or the things that we aren't doing well within the Sheriff's Office, we need that information. I love to get praise. I mean, I think it's great for our staff to be told that they're doing a great job, but I don't know that really improves the Sheriff's Office. Sometimes we need that, the truth, you know? We need that hard fact that, hey, you're not doing well here. You're kind of failing here because without that, we're not going to improve what we're doing and how we're serving our community. I would really like in the future, and again, you know, it's staffing, there's all kinds of pros and cons to a lot of things, but, you know, we used to have a program where we had beat deputies that were assigned to a certain area of the community for a year period. That was where they worked for a year. I think that's very important, and I think that we should strive to get back to that. We send a deputy sometimes because of our current scheduling, because of staffing, into, say, Middletown, and they're in Middletown today, and then tomorrow they're in Upperlake. Well, it's very difficult for them to identify the problems, meet with the community, talk to the community, and resolve those problems before they get bigger. So going back to that beat deputy system where we're having those deputies in those beats where they're assigned there for a year, they get to know the community, they get to know the members of the community, they understand the problems in the community, they know the business owners, the needs and wants of the business owners and of the community as a whole. So I would like to get back to that someday. That's a definite benefit to the community and to the Sheriff's Office because it's that community-oriented policing that's, you know, we're there for the community, for the betterment of the community, not just, you know, it's, if we arrest somebody and we take them to jail and we incarcerate them and then we let them out, have we really done anything to improve the community? Yes and no. But if we're in that community and we're identifying problems and we're solving problems, that's benefiting the daily life and that quality of life, then we've impacted the community, and that's what we should be doing, and that's what that beat deputy assignment does. It's impactful to the communities.
Thank you.
What familiarity do you have with any new state, federal legislation proposed to begin next year, and if you can elaborate?
There's a lot. There's some that are going to affect law enforcement. There's things about, there's SB two that starts in January. That's the reporting to the State Post about the decertification of police officers for certain violations of conduct in law that will be reported to the state. There are requirements, and I don't, honestly, I don't have them in front of me, and to remember all of those SBs and ABs, and there's just so many of them, it's kind of hard to remember them all. There are a couple statutes that are changing how we conduct interviews of juveniles. Or, well, we've always conducted interviews of juveniles this way under case law, but this is now being statute, made into statute and codified. There are some about going back and investigating deputies for anything that connects them to hate crimes or hate groups, including some of the new hiring practices of vetting recruits through the POST program to ensure that they're not decertified somewhere else, and then also doing a dive into their social media and other areas to ensure that they don't have any biases or anything that's apparent on the level. Off the top of my head, that's about all I can remember at this time. I've got a whole list on my desk, but I think it's about five pages long, so it's kind of hard to commit all of that to memory.
Thank you for that.
If appointed, what do you plan to achieve at six months and one year?
I think, I would go even further back, a hundred-day plan. I thought about this quite a bit. A hundred-day plan is really important, I think, especially for somebody new coming into that seat, and I think the first hundred-day plan is meeting with the constituents and the board supervisors to identify and understand all of the problems in their communities, meeting with the tribal chairs and the tribal councils to understand the problems in their communities, how we're supporting them, make sure that I'm meeting with the chiefs of police and the fire departments and that we understand and we're all on the same page. And that includes other department heads within Lake County, you know, community development, code enforcement, buildings and grounds. We all work together for the same goal, and that's the service of the community. So to, one entity can't do it by themselves because everything that we do crosses with each other. It all intermingles with each other. So making sure that we have those relationships or I have those relationships and the phone numbers and we're all collaborative on the same page is very important, I think, within the first hundred days. Within the first six months, there's a few things that I would like to do in the Sheriff's Office that I think are lacking, and now that things have gotten a little bit better for us in the Sheriff's Office, you know, again, it always comes down to staffing and finite resources and time. I think one of the things that we are lacking in the Sheriff's Office that I would like to see within the first six months for, internally for the Sheriff's Office, is a leadership program. I think we lack that in the Sheriff's Office. I know that was a goal of the sheriffs, but unfortunately, and him and I have talked about it, and we, along with another lieutenant in the Sheriff's Office, we've started the basic ground phases of it to get it going, but then we had COVID and then we had all of these things, and it just kind of put it on the back burner. And I would like to get that moving forward again. I think that's very important. A lot of times, we have deputies and we bring them into the department and we teach them how to be a cop, and then eight or ten years later, we go, "Okay, you're a sergeant now. Good luck," and they go to a two-week sergeant school. And that's about the training that they have to be a leadership. Most of our sergeants have done really, really well, but I think we're kind of, we can do better. If we get that leadership training program up and running, we're teaching them how to be good leaders. We're teaching them how to lead their staff, which just benefits the community as a whole. It benefits the Sheriff's Office and the future progression, you know, future planning of the Sheriff's Office. I think that's important. Meeting with the community, like I said, is, I think, very think that's important. Meeting with the community, like I said, is I think very important, establishing those relationships within the community. Within the first year, I think another area within the sheriff's office that I think is lacking, and I think it goes towards recruitment, and I think it will help with recruitment. We have a really good EAP program here in Lake County, but I think it's difficult for our deputies to go to a counselor who doesn't understand what they see and the trauma and the stress that they deal with on a daily basis. Having that wellness program within the sheriff's office, there's a bunch of different apps that I've actually looked at that we can get. There's, I've done a little bit of legwork on it, but I think having that really well rounded wellness program in the sheriff's office for that mental health is a good idea. I've talked to a couple of sheriffs and police chiefs and other agencies that do three year mandatory wellness checks and stress management checks for all of their employees, deputies, corrections, and dispatchers. I like the idea. I've seen some pros and cons with it. I've thought about it different ways, but I like the pros of it is it takes the stigma away from it because how many deputies, being type A personalities, being you know, strong, all of that are going to raise their hand and say, I am having an issue, I'm struggling here. It's rare. So if you take the stigma away from it where they're just going to go sit and they're going to talk to somebody for a half hour or 45 minutes, we have the potential to affect three to five of those people that are struggling and just aren't telling anybody. And then the other ones that aren't struggling, we're kind of giving them the ideas of how to deal with that stress management, how to deal with those things that they see on a day to day basis. I mean, our deputies and correctional officers and dispatchers see things and hear things that most of the community doesn't see, and it leaves a mark on them. And I think we need to do a better job of caring for them. And then that rolls into recruitment, again, because we can, we're showing that to our potential recruits, that this is how we take care of our people here. We value you and we're going to take care of you in our department because we value you as an employee and we want you to have a long career here in Lake County. Is there another part to that question that I missed?
Okay.
What do you think the biggest challenge is going to be in assuming this role?
That's a difficult question. It seems, it seems so simple, but it's rather difficult. You know, I think, you know, if you gave me an hour or two to sit down and scribble things out and take notes, I like writing and thinking as I'm writing because it's all right there. But I think one of the biggest struggles is getting the community trust, honestly. The position of sheriff is an elected position. And I think that some of the community may look at it as, you know, a placeholder, an invalid sheriff, because I'm appointed by the board supervisors, five people, though representative of the people, it's still five versus being elected to the position, which is the entire or the majority of the community saying, yes, we want, you know, Lucas Bingham to be the sheriff of Lake County. I think there's some legitimacy there that may be an issue to overcome. I think that can be overcome though, through, again, my leadership style, my willingness to get out and talk to people. I do that now. I truly enjoy it. Between all the events we do, I do all of the community outreach for the sheriff's office, it's using me and P I L Lauren Berlin, the Dickens Fair, National Night Out, the parades. We go out and we do these things and interact with the community. And I think by just continuing to do that, I can overcome that. And I think another challenge would be filling Sheriff Martin's shoes. You guys all know, he's out there, he does a great job, he has a lot of respect for the community, he has a lot of respect from me. I learned a lot from him, but I think that would, is also going to be a challenge. I think there'd be a lot of, well, that's not what Brian would do, or not how Brian did it. And so I think that's, you know, that would be a bit of a challenge too.
Thank you for that. It's almost over, promise. That concludes the stock questions. The board was gracious enough to allow me to ask two follow up questions, and hopefully the questions will be longer than the answers because I write stuff down too, just so I can keep track.
That's the way I like to work. You just, I just can't keep it all there. I like to write it down.
I've got notes. Okay, so criminal and civil enforcement of cannabis related crimes and violations has become more challenging since the passage of Proposition 64. State and county laws can be confusing for the public to understand, and compliance and enforcement work can be short circuited by short staffing, lack of coordination between agencies. What is your view of the current state of cannabis enforcement by the sheriff's department? And what changes, if any, are needed to build confidence in the county's compliance and enforcement strategies?
That's a difficult question. There's a lot there.
There is.
So we'll talk about the illicit side first. The sheriff's office, honestly, and I hate to say this because it's a quality of life, it's an environmental issue, we probably are able to deal with 15 to 20% of the illicit grows that are out there. We, our detectives focus on those that are quality of life and those that are egregious to the environment and damage to the environment. That's what we focus on. With, currently, we're doing a fairly good job with that. We could, if we could expand our program, but again, you know, staffing, recruitment, so on and so forth, it's difficult to do, we could have a greater impact on that illicit growing. And I think having that impact on the illicit growing assists the licensed legal growing because that illicit growing optically is giving a bad picture to the legalized side of it, the legal regulated side of it. And it's also cutting the market for that industry. So by targeting that illicit market and reducing that the best we can, we're also helping that legal side, that regulated side, which we should be doing. The analogy I like to use when people ask me my stance, and when a lot of people hear that I spent eight and a half years in narcotics and three years with the DEA, they automatically assume that I have this aversion to marijuana. I don't, I really don't. I use the analogy of alcohol prohibition. Alcohol was prohibited for a time during the twenties and thirties, and then it was not. And now it's a legal market and it's treated as a legal market, it's regulated, it's enforced, and there we go. I think it's the same thing for marijuana. It's a legal market and that's where it's at, and it should have all of the rights and responsibilities and regulations of any other legal industry in the state of California. Where it kind of comes to be a little bit of an issue is between the state and the feds. And for us, currently, we get decept money from the federal government to enforce marijuana in Lake County, which I think, it's been talked about, and I truly believe that within the next probably three to five years, it's going to be deregulated federally. And when that happens, that's going to cause some issues for the county and the sheriff's office because now we're going to struggle with funding and sources to enforce that illicit market, which again hurts the community, hurts quality of life, and it also hurts the legal market, that regulated market. So that's difficult. I think one thing that we can do, I mean, this board has done a lot for that illicit market. You guys, the water truck ordinances and all of that, I think we're all good. But I think one thing that we maybe have missed at and we can get better is partnering with the licensed regulated market. We haven't done such a good job of that in my mind, and I think it would benefit both sides because they would be able to come in and see what we're doing and what we're enforcing and how we're enforcing it and ask those questions because we're available to that. But then also, they have the same goal as we do when it comes to the illicit market. I don't think that they want the illicit market any more than our community does or enforcement does. And they have the knowledge, they're in that environment, they're in that realm, they're dealing with that, they see the illicit market, they see those people that are involved in that. And bringing them to the table as a stakeholder and bringing them into that conversation, I think would assist us in enforcing that illicit market and hopefully doing the best we can to mitigate it.
And then one last question. Recently, this board approved the sheriff's department's use of automated license plate readers to help track suspect vehicles as they move about the county. In my hometown of Fresno, gun discharges are detected with an automated shot spotter system. Facial recognition technology is widespread and growing rapidly, both on public and private facing computer systems. For law enforcement, technology important, offers important new tools for detecting and solving crimes, but it also raises privacy concerns for individuals and societal concerns about erecting and funding a surveillance state of sorts. As sheriff, how would you balance the privacy concerns of county residents with the increasing use of technology to identify and track people and vehicles?
I think as we've seen with the license plate reader system, the flock camera system that we have, it's been very beneficial to the county. We've solved a hit and run homicide off of that system. We've recovered a lot of stolen vehicles and stolen property off of that system. But I agree with you, there is that privacy right. I think one of the things that we've done within the sheriff's office, and I believe if I am not mistaken, we don't retain that information for any extreme length of time. There are other agencies that I have seen that have retained those photographs of the license plates and the vehicles for a year, two years in their, in their system, I believe. If I'm not mistaken, and I don't have it in front of me, so I'm very hesitant to give you the exact number, but I believe it's no more than 30 days and that information is automatically purged from the system so that we're not retaining that and we're not in that surveillance state point where we're just collecting data upon data of our citizens. I agree with you, I don't think that's right. We shouldn't do that. If we have a reasonable need for it or probable cause because we're investigating a crime or we know that in a certain area crime is being committed and we can resolve that crime by that technology, I would be for using that technology to target that specific crime. But to simply, as you said, the AI and all of that, to simply just put it up to watch everybody and monitor everybody, I would agree with you and a lot of the people that I don't think that's appropriate. I think it needs to be used sparingly and I think it needs to be used with the community engagement and the community input into that as to when and how we use that information and how we deploy those systems. One of the systems that the Clear Lake Police Department has, and I like it, it's a trailer system with a camera, it's kind of a mobile flock system, and it's used very targeted. It's not just there monitoring people, it's when they have a crime or they have a search warrant or they have something like that, they'll go out there, they'll put it up and they'll monitor it, and as soon as they're done, they take it down and they put it away. I think that's the appropriate use of that type of technology. I like technology. I think we should employ technology as much as we can, especially as it saves lives and increases the ability of the sheriff's office and our deputies. One of the programs that I'm working on right now is the, I just lost the word for it, UAVs, the small unmanned aerial vehicles. And again, that, that policies would be, and what we're looking at, what we'd be discussing, is tailoring those very specifically, not just using them patently and whenever. There's a lot of federal regulation with those and there's a lot of information with those. But that technology is huge for like search and rescue. You know, we have somebody where we're searching for them, but we have a vast area, we can cover three times the space with that technology than we could with 10 people on the ground on the foot searching, which could save somebody's life. So I think it's important technology, but I agree, we need to balance that technology with the rights of the community and the wishes of the community as a whole.
Thank you.
Well, that concludes all of the questions for the interview. And what we will do is also just open it up for you to make any final comments or questions or anything of that nature. And then if anyone in the board has anything else to say, then be a good opportunity to do so.
Again, I would like to thank you for your time and the opportunity for allowing me to come here and talk about. But I know, as I've said, I'm not going to sit here and tell you I know everything. And I understand that I don't know what I know today, but I'll know tomorrow, kind of thing. And luckily in law enforcement and a lot of things that we do, there's books, there's people, there's regulations, there's something that's going to tell you what you need to do and the right way to go. I think as far as decision making for the department, as the sheriff, keeping in mind that we exist because of the community and we exist to serve the community is very important. And instilling that in the deputies as part of our principles, values, vision, and mission within the sheriff's office is very important. Don't police at them, we should be policing with them is very important. As I said, I'm very invested in the community, I'm invested in the sheriff's office. I want both to succeed in improvement in the future. And whether I'm appointed or Rob is appointed, I will continue to work towards that goal. That's what I'm here for. That's what I've chosen in my life and my career to be is that public servant. And I truly believe that is a responsibility that we all have. You guys are serving, we're all serving. And I think we all have that responsibility and that idea that that's how we're supposed to do things. I think the board, as I said, has a very difficult decision here and I don't envy you for that at all. I think I am very capable of leading the sheriff's office. However, I also think that Rob Howe is capable of leading the sheriff's office in the future, in the next two years. And if I am not appointed, I will continue to support the sheriff's office, the community, and I will do everything I can to support the appointee of this board and make sure that they're successful, as I have done for Sheriff Martin and prior to. Again, thank you for your time.
Supervisor Sabatia. I want to thank you for your time today. You and I have sat down and had conversations in the past. Nothing in comparison to the conversation we've just had today. I've seen a side of you that I've not gotten to experience before. I know you were anxious coming in for a very public interview. Just want to say thank you. And it's good to get to know you a little bit better. Usually, we're very limited on the professional level. It's specific, tailored to a specific topic that we usually discuss, but I want to say thank you very much for today's interview. Thank you for applying.
Thank you, supervisor.
Thank you, Lucas.
Thank you.
All right, with that, well, go ahead.
No, thank you very much.
With that, we'll go ahead and close this portion of the interview. And once again, thanks for applying. And of course, after lunch, it looks like we're going to come back and discuss where we'll go from there. So just to make everybody nervous over the lunch hour is what we're trying to do.
Why not? It's been one of those days.
All right. So with that.
Are we planning to come back at 1:00 or?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to find out. Are we looking to do 1:30 or 1:00? 1:00?
Should we go for 1:00?
Yeah, well, we're going to go.
Are we going to really eat?
How about 1:15?
1:15, is that okay?
Forty-five minutes?
Would that be a good compromise?
Kind of a 15 minute compromise.
That would be after the 1:00 or 1:15 or whatever we decide here. How's everyone feel about 1:15?
If, I would say for staff purposes, I would say let's just do the full hour. I think the rest of the agenda is still easily.
The rest of the day?
We can easily do it for the rest of the day. I don't think that we have an over amount of stuff to achieve today.
All right.
1:30 is fine.
Okay, that's what we'll do. Sorry, Johanna. So we'll do that. We'll see everybody at 1:30 and we'll continue from there.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and I'll read off the next item if it doesn't scream in my ear or our ear. So yes, next agenda on the item, as we discussed before the lunch break, is review and consideration for the sheriff, coroner candidates to serve the term of January 2nd, 2023 to January 2nd, 2025. So with that, it looks as if we are, basically, I'm reading from the executive summary, but actually I'll let the CAO go ahead and.
Yes, I was just going to recommend that you may wish to take public comment now before you begin to deliberate.
Sounds good. And so what I'll do is, I'm still waiting for my Zoom. Is anybody else on Zoom right now? Because mine's just like, I don't know why it's not coming.
I currently see no hands up on Zoom.
Okay. What I'll do is I'll open it up for the chambers. If there's anybody that has a comment or would like to come up and speak, we'll go ahead and allow that for three minutes, of course. And if you have a question, we ask that you direct the questions to us as the candidates have already answered the questions in series that we went through. From what I understand, both candidates will be joining via Zoom. And so, yeah, they'll be, they'll be listening in as well. And so we'll go from there. Is there anybody in the chambers that'd like to come up and speak? All right.
Chris Chakowski, captain for Lake County Sheriff's Office. I know you got a very tough decision to make. I know you got a very tough decision to make. I want to commend both Rob and Luke for doing a good job. I've worked with them both as peers, I've worked with them both, one as a supervisor, I've supervised the other, they are both capable individuals. And whatever your decision is, like I said, I know it's a tough one, but on the same note, we're excited that Luke has decided to run for sheriff, he has the support of a lot of people at the sheriff's office and several command staff members, but again, I want to commend those two for doing a really good job, so thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others in the chamber that would like to speak on this item? All right. Do you have any hands up in Zoom?
Still no hands.
All right. I guess we'll, we'll bring it back to the board so we could have a further discussion and go from there. So Supervisor Sabatia, I see your pens up first, so.
I, I want to say first a, a global statement. The quality of the two candidates, the answers that we received, the experience that they have speaks highly of not just the sheriff's department, but the county as a whole, since we're also looking at a chief probation officer here in front of us. I, I'm very proud that that is the representation that Lake County has and that came and provided an application for this very important position. On one hand, you have somebody that I think has had a little bit more leadership experience at the upper levels of management, but also another, I don't want to say young, but younger up and coming who is ambitious to obtain the experience. There were some differences of answers to some of the questions that were asked. And I just wanted to highlight some of the comments that I heard from Lieutenant Bingham, really liked his response to his view and vision of what the sheriff stands for. He spoke about the constitutional rights. I do believe that that is one of the leading parts of being the sheriff is to ensure that those rights are held strong. I also liked his answer of diversity, I think he spoke very well about that, the efforts already currently being made and the future efforts being made. And I, I know I'm not making it any easier here, but on the other side, I feel that Rob with his experience, with his intimate experience with being a department head, dealing with the, I hate to say it, but the bureaucracy of being a department head, I think that's the right term to use, that it's, there's possibly an easier flow of continuity with expectation of the connection between the CAO, the finance departments and the needs of the department The interviews made it that much more difficult because I was pretty impressed by both gentlemen and was not expecting to be so close to the decisions that I would be making today. So I'll leave it at that with those comments for now, listen in to what my colleagues have to say and then come back for what, who I would like to see in that position.
All right. Does anyone want to go next?
Sure, I'll go, why not? I want to thank both candidates too, it takes a lot of, it takes a lot of courage to sit up there as both did for an hour and get grilled in a very public setting and I also appreciate the comments about what a difficult choice it is. I, I am comforted in that I feel our choice today is not going to be as difficult as it could have been. I certainly was the one who called for open recruitment, I think there's always value in casting a wide net, trying to be inclusive as you can, but there's also a need for speed, there's a need for continuity, there's a need for the business of this county and the sheriff's office to, to proceed. In my opinion, after all this is, what a blessing to have two strong candidates, you know, when you take a look, we're here today to do a one-term appointment that will last for the two years before the next election, but if you take a look at the arc of the sheriff's department and both of the candidates here and their service to the county, you can pick any number of time points along that timeline and just be impressed. I was incredibly impressed by Lieutenant Bingham's responses to many of the questions, some of the concerns I have about the future direction of the department, but I was equally impressed by Mr. Howe and his commitment to the county, his prior service in the sheriff's office, 10-plus years in probation, not easy in, in any stretch, and cognizant a little of some of the events in years past where he, his career path might have continued with the sheriff's office but for some circumstances, And one of the most, one of the biggest distinguishing points between the comments was who's running and who's not. And I find myself in the same position, I'm appointed, who knows what will happen in 2024, so I kind of echo Rob's comments, I'll never say never, but I think his intention in, in filling or applying for the job was to be a bridge, at least until 2024 and, and hopefully have a, a next generation, one or more candidates and stand for election in 2024 and, and whatever decision we make today, that decision two years down the road, you know, that'll be the proper decision and the people will weigh in on that. So looking at the arc of where this department needs to go and where the county needs to go, I do see a win-win in there. I'm going to give the edge to Mr. Howe on continuity, I'm going to give the edge to Mr. Bingham on the long-term vision and goals of the department. And so as far as today's appointment and where we're going to go for the next two years, I, I think I have a preferred candidate in mind, even knowing that, I think this will be ongoing discussion with our community and ultimately with the voters of this county to see who the next sheriff will be in 2024 and I think we're going to be in very good hands whatever happens today.
So you guys want me to go next? All right, well, you know, I did a, my own scoring mechanism, which made it very hard, I have a lot of equals, so like, you know, they, they matched each other really well, even though some of it was a little different, you know, answers to the questions, they still like equally balanced, it was like, wow. I, you know, I, I really enjoyed the, the answers from Lieutenant Bingham in regards to some ideas, but I know the experience of both of them are equal, or, you know, I, I really feel like, I know that Rob has the experience as a director as of now, so that's, that's, that's one of the key emphasis. And I do agree with Supervisor Green that with Lieutenant Bingham running, announcing basically that he will be running, I think that's a good long-term and short-term scenario I also think about how this plays out when it comes to, and I'm not sure, like whatever decision we make, currently right now, it doesn't seem as if we have an undersheriff. I know at one time we had Captain Macedo as the undersheriff and so I don't know if whoever takes the spot, if one or the other could be, you know, or let's say that potentially Rob takes the, is chosen for the sheriff, if, if Lieutenant Bingham could be the undersheriff, so he could prepare for that specific deal, or I'm not sure if Rob would desire to, if he's not chosen, leave from probation, I'm not sure. And I'm only giving these scenarios as, as, again, it's a, it's a very, a very, very close deal here, they made it very hard, I told Sheriff Martin, I'd, in a way, I just kind of want to flip a coin, but you can't do that, you have to make a tough decision and, and you have to go with that and so in my scoring mechanism, my, my edge goes to Rob Howe. And so I, I think that with that, I would like to see, I, I'm glad to know that Lieutenant Bingham is running for sheriff because that's, you know, that, that's a qualified and candidate that I know a lot of folks can count on, you know, in that aspect, so, and a lot of folks can get behind regardless if it's in staff or with, with the department or, I did like Lieutenant Bingham's concept of going back on the beat or having stations, I really liked that. So, and I'm pretty sure he could still work on that and so my edge will go with Rob and LT, he did a really great job though as well and so you made it really, both made it really hard for me and I respect both of you highly. But my strategic thinking is to allow this two years to, you know, pull forward with continuity, with some, with a little bit more experience and then go with, and I'm pretty confident that Lieutenant will have a good campaign and we'll see how that goes from there. So that's, that's my opinion and I'll stick to that.
This is incredibly difficult, I, and have really enjoyed getting to know Rob over the last couple of years and watching how he leads and how he builds teams. I've also grown up with Lucas, I know his character, I see the work that he's put in, I think they're both excellent candidates and we're in good hands either way. But I am concerned about the campaign, I am so grateful that Lieutenant Bingham is stepping up and announcing that because I, I think that's going to be a win for the, for the county, but I, I know a countywide campaign takes a lot of time and energy and so I do have a concern about a new job and a campaign and being able to be successful at both and, you know, given the answers that both of them gave today, it makes it a really hard decision, but that, I think that's the piece for me that gives Rob the edge for me to make sure that we have very strong leadership throughout this transition and throughout the, the campaign and the election years.
Appreciate everybody's comments, you know, yeah, definitely a decision, did not see, didn't see a pandemic coming before I ran for office and didn't see that we'd be picking a sheriff either. You know, for myself, there's pretty much one deciding factor, both great quality candidates, had a chance to obviously work with Rob a little more than the Luke, but obviously grew up with Luke in the South County and I just want to thank them both for putting themselves out there. This is also our first public interview that we've been through as a board, there may have been some of this stuff done in the past, but you know, it was interesting. For me, always looking at the future, the next seven generations of this county and as we're moving forward, I will just state it right off the bat, you know, what I'm looking for is an opportunity for someone to take over the leadership of the sheriff's department, seems like they both have good supporters, you're not going to get 100% support in, from anything, but you know, just at least the one comment that was made here and then the answers that were given, for me, the one thing that, just saying that Luke is going to run for this position, I think it gives him a unique opportunity to really work with our community, the community also to see what potentially could be or couldn't be, you know, they'll make the decision in 2024. But for me, both great candidates, but always looking towards the future. I'm hoping even when I'm not sitting in this seat, it's a younger, more ambitious person that's going to do even better and be smarter and brighter and, you know, keep moving this county forward. So for, for myself and that opportunity, you know, I'm leaning towards, I'll make a motion when I get a chance to move forward with Lieutenant Bingham. So that's where I'm, as far as my respect for Rob Howe and the work that he does for this county and all the years that he served it, I can't say more than just I greatly respect it and have that opportunity to serve with him. So for me, looking at the future and the opportunities, I think they put themselves out there, you know, I think there were a couple of comments, I think Luke made a comment about a little bit of, well, wasn't appointed by the county but appointed by the board, but this is the procedure as it works, once we make this appointment, whether it's, whether Lucas or Rob win, they are the elected interim official to, for the sheriff, that, that's what they are. And it's, you know, they just got to keep leading, so for me, it's, yeah, monumental decision, but not a hard one because both those candidates sat in front of us today will move Lake County forward, but I'm, I'll just say it, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of Lucas Bingham, so.
Supervisor Green?
Honorable Chair, I would request the privilege of making this motion if only because I've opened my big fat mouth once or twice and.
Did you have another statement? Okay, all right, with that.
And I do think that the motion I'm going to make will provide both for continuity and opportunities for mentorship, which both people said was very important and I certainly appreciate that. With that, I make the motion to appoint Udis Rob Howe as sheriff coroner to serve the term of January 2nd, 2023 to January 2nd, 2025.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. With that, I want to, before I close this discussion, I want to thank both candidates. I, I can't emphasize seriously how hard this decision was. You know, I know for all of us it is and I know, I just know that it's, it's also one of those things when you come in on the other side of this, you have people you work with that are colleagues and, you know, it, it doesn't cause that much dissension because they're a real tight-knit group, but at the same time, there's just a little, you know, you know, just a little, little of all of that here and there, you know, just worrying about how it goes from there, but not, not that extensive because as, as Sheriff said, he, he's, he is really at least satisfied with knowing that these two candidates, these two gentlemen were of the future, so he was comfortable in retiring, he told me that and I hope you don't mind us saying that, Sheriff. So with that, we'll go ahead and close this item and thank everybody for coming in and we'll, we'll see where it goes from there. Is there anything else we need to do, Ms. Grant, from this point forward?
Are you going to wait then to make the appointment on January, you don't have a meeting on January 2nd, do you, what is your board's intent? Do you intend to just continue with the highest ranking officer until, until you formally make an appointment or do you want to make the appointment today?
I'd like to finish up the process and make the appointment.
Well, just point of clarification, the vacancy doesn't exist today, the vacancy wouldn't exist till the term starts January 2nd.
Correct.
Wouldn't that be correct?
Yes, so it would be an appointment effective on January 2nd.
Okay.
Correct. And so. And did we already appoint Chris as interim?
Yes.
Okay, so the choice is either let it ride to the 2nd or.
No, if we, if we decide today or to, it would be effective on the 2nd.
Yes, Mr. Howe would have to take the oath of office before noon on January 2nd pursuant to state law, so as will anyone who's been elected to office in the county, must take office by noon on the first Monday after January 1st. So your board may certainly appoint Mr. Howe effective January 2nd if, if that's your pleasure.
All right. So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and so that's one we'll appoint and is, is that, that's on a workday or a holiday?
Either way, it's January 2nd.
It's a holiday, but state law doesn't care.
But we can, we can, we can still conduct it and do it, are we doing this in the chambers or how's this working?
I believe actually the registrar of voters has very graciously offered to open her office in, at noon or sometime on the 2nd, it have to be by noon, so I'm sure, I'm assuming the morning, so that she can swear in anyone. There are many other county officials, the CAO is able to, to source someone in as a superior court judges who won't be here, but many, many other county employees, but as I said, the registrar was very graciously open about being there so that she can, she can do the oath of office for a. open about being there so that she can, she can, uh, do the oath of office for elected.
Okay.
I, I do have a email here from, uh, Maria Valdez, a Registrar of Voters, saying that they plan to be in the office on the 2nd, um, between 12:00 and 2:00 PM. But you said it needs to be done by noon?
They take office at noon.
Okay.
All right. So if the, did I take the vote already? I did, right. Okay. So if you want...
But I'm still confused by the vote. Can you tell me what we just did again?
Well, so...
I thought we did the appointment. What was the second motion to do?
We appoint, the second motion was to appoint him on January 2nd.
There was, there was just the one motion, I believe, to appoint him effective January 2nd.
Okay. Yeah.
But the first one was making the decision on who.
So we, so that we don't have to wait until the first meeting of January, which would be past the state mandate that ensures that he's swearing in. So that's what this, the, that's what the vote was. He can swear in.
Just to give a direction of staff to when it's going to happen?
Right.
And then Maria stood up. Okay, thank you.
And then if anyone wants to be there when he swears in, of course, that'll be at the Registrar of Voters' office. So, all right. That concludes that, uh, item on the agenda unless there's anything else. All right. With that, we'll go to the consent agenda, uh, 5.4. Uh, I don't see, uh, Mr. Miller. Um, we'll go to 5.4. Approve advanced step increase for substance abuse. Is that the one? Am I on the right one?
I believe we pulled...
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Approve advanced step increase for substance abuse counselor, senior, step five for Denise Newman. Um, and so Todd, Todd's here?
Do I get to come up here or?
Yes. Yes. And so you, Supervisor Sabate, you pulled this, right?
Yeah. So thank you very much. Uh, I, I pulled this and I had a conversation with HR. Um, we used to have a 12-step scenario for, um, years of service and so on and so forth. Um, and the, uh, now we've dropped it down to step five and here we're looking to start somebody at the top step. Um, I know I needed to have a conversation with HR, which I did on, um, obviously the, they can't approve anything above step three. Uh, but my question to them was, well, am I getting a thumbs up or a thumbs down for step four or five? And it's just that you can't, um, say yes to that. Uh, and, and I'm concerned that it gets rid of the meaning of the steps. Uh, and once we start opening that door, which I know we've tried to kind of pull back from opening that door, that, how many more of these are we going to see? Um, now I, I don't have the email in front of me, but I believe that I was told HR, uh, was looking at step three or step four as far as being appropriate for the years of experience. Uh, I don't mind going to step three, but I wanted to make sure and have the conversation with the board and seeing if they're okay with step five or if they want to, um, look at a different step. Uh, again, I want to make sure that we keep our, the integrity of the steps intact and that when we do make these types of decisions that they are the correct decision. Um, so I just wanted to have further conversation.
And so Director Metcalf, if you wanted to elaborate or if you have someone that...
Um, yes. Um, I also have April Gamra, our clinical deputy director, um, here, uh, with me. Uh, I can speak to the experience of Ms. Newman and the reason why we're wanting to bring her in at this, at this particular, particular step level because she has, she worked for our department once upon a time. Um, she's, as the memo states, she's got more than enough experience and qualifications to do, to perform, um, in this position. And as, as you've heard me talk about CalAim in the past, a few months ago, I, I presented to the board, um, that the payment reform initiative in CalAim will allow, um, our, 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 our folks to be able to bill at a higher rate. And this particular position, um, would allow her to do so. And so even though it, um, we already have monies allocated in our budget to, to, to pay, um, at this rate, um, she would be able to, to bill, uh, at a much higher rate and bring in, more than pay for herself. And she won't be the only one. But April, am I, am I missing something here? She's nodding. I must have missed something.
No. Uh, good morning or good afternoon, uh, Borg and everyone. April Gamra, like County Behavioral Health. Um, Ms. Newman possesses 16, uh, years' experience, uh, providing SUD services in a drug medcalc certified facility, but her experience goes beyond that to 20-plus years. Um, with the CalAim payment reform, well, so this position is also very difficult to fill. Um, we have had very few applicants. Um, when this, uh, employee, I, I'm not sure to what degree I can speak, but I know that, um, in Ms. Newman's case, she would be coming back in a, a position or a rate of pay in which she left. Um, and so there's also that factor that I wanted to have considered. Um, and yes, Todd, you did mention it's 400 and I believe 21 or $61 an hour that this position will now be able to bill, which is, uh, more than four times the amount that we previously were able to bill for. So not only is this service clinically needed, uh, but it pays for itself. Um, and she comes with 20 years plus the educational experience background of, uh, being in school for a bachelor's degree. So I feel as though she is very much, um, someone that I would advocate for for this position.
April, thank you. And I, I do just want to echo what you said. Um, and, and after watching, um, the interviews this morning about how difficult it is to fill positions, this is a very difficult to fill position. And I would hate to, I would hate to lose out, um, if we can't step up and, and, um, offer, um, an appropriate amount of pay, uh, to fill this position. And so, um, that's why this is coming, coming to, to your board. Um, and I think the memo kind of outlines most of that, but, you know, I, I, I'm proud to say we're still at a 14% vacancy rate, which is great, but this is, has been a difficult position to fill, as, as April said. And so that's why we're advocating for this higher, um, higher step level of pay.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, appreciate you pulling this item. Supervisor Sabate, but, um, I'll get the committee, right? Class and Comp Committee? That's the one we worked on, uh, putting this together. I know I've sat in quite a few meetings. It was Supervisor Scott who sat on that committee with me too, uh, previously to go through this process and come up with some conversations. Um, you know, I'd like to hear a little bit from, from, from Pam as we move forward, but right now I just think it is a challenge. I think it, this board really needs to understand if we're going to take this on a case-by-case basis. Now, I'm not talking about the applicant that is here today. I'm just talking about setting up the process at work. And I, Ms. Newman, I've heard nothing but good things about her today and, and those things. So I'm just talking about the position as we work through this. And the Class and Comp Committee was, there were long conversations on making sure that we did have some stopgaps because I think everybody has hard-to-fill positions throughout the county, each director. And the conversations were really, well, how do we curve that of every week, every month, someone comes saying, well, I want to start them at step five, want to start them at step five. So I know a lot of conversations with not just myself, the two supervisors that were on that committee. There was a lot of conversation that went back and forth. And I think it's a pretty good program that we have set up here, uh, to not just be jumping steps and moving forward. Now, I understand about hard recruitments and all those types of things, but, um, you know, I'm not sure if I'm, I'm in favor. Well, I'm not in favor because I helped, went through the conversations. Again, I'm not going to go all the way back, but this wasn't just something that we were able to get put together quickly. There was a lot of conversation from all the directors that were in that committee, uh, to help things move forward. So, you know, that, those are my thoughts. I just wanted to bring that up about the Class and Comp Committee and setting these bars now if they come on an individual basis, but we may get a lot of those, um, you know, as we move forward. So, uh, it was with the former CIO and everybody else. I don't know who was all on the committee. Maybe Pam could help give a background of who sits on that committee.
Is it still active?
We haven't, we haven't met in a long time, but it is still...
But it's still there?
Yes.
We will be meeting soon on reclass, um, request, um, in January as I go through the reclasses that were just sent. Um, we, we have to take a look at that. We need, I need to do some benches to see where we're at. Um, but we will be meeting in January to discuss the reclass attempts. And so we do have a process. Um, the HR Director can approve up to step three. I was comfortable with approving step three because of the advanced experience. I'm a little uncomfortable going to step five because none of our internal, um, employees are allowed to skip a step. They're here, they're in it. Does this serve internal equity? Um, did, did we attempt step three, um, before we jumped to step five? Because not only do we, this is a hard-to-fill position, um, it would come with potentially the sign-on. Um, if she's not in county, it could come potentially with a relocation. So I think we have to look at all the things together and not just jump to step five is my recommendation. And, and we do still get plenty of advanced step in, uh, preparing for this. I just went through my emails to look at all the advanced steps, created a log. Thus far, we've had about 45 advanced step requests for 2022. Um, we've had, um, 19 at step two, 21 at step three, and we matched, um, per our new rules, three at step five, which were current other county employees, um, for hard-to-fill positions. So, um, Behavioral Health has asked for eight thus far. Um, and this would be the biggest at step five.
I figured I've, I've, I've probably added to that list. But thank you, Pam.
Did I hear you correctly that we've approved three as step five?
Correct. Now, the recruiting rules with the match allows me to match somebody and we matched three people at step five who were other county employees that we wanted to get in, in hard-to-fill positions, in, um, an attorney position, a DA position. So that did not have to go before the board because the recruiting rules allow me to match to bring somebody in.
So I, I'm gonna, little sidestep of this item, um, wondering if we can have consensus to review the policy, uh, in front of the board. Um, just because I'd like to better understand how that policy works, especially, we haven't changed the policy and we went from 12-step to five-step and there's still that same, uh, allowance from HR all the way to step three, which no longer means step three in a 12-step situation versus a five. I, I'd like to see if maybe we can bring that back to the board for review.
Sure. We did update the advanced rule with rules on how, um, we look at advanced step and the applicant has to meet two to three times the minimum qualifications for the department to request an advanced step. And we updated those rules, I think, two years ago or a year and a half ago?
Sounds like around the time that we approved the Class and Comp Study or something like...
Yes. So it, it, there is, prior, there wasn't many guidelines in how a department would, um, define an advanced step, but we just got a request based on what they felt. And so when we changed the rules, um, we did add some criteria of the two to three times and then the matching criteria because what was happening was we were losing candidates from other counties, um, because they were just so much higher than what our compensation was that were critical fills. So that also allowed us to match. But yes, I could, um, email you all the policy that was updated.
One, one other suggestion, we're about to do committee assignments as we move forward. So obviously I know Supervisor Scott was on that, but I think that would be a good discussion, uh, and opportunity if you're interested in that, you know, they're just throwing it out there. We're about to do those, uh, coming up pretty quick.
Yes. So I do, uh, need a volunteer to fill the second seat.
And I'm sure, well, today's not the day for, for that.
No, I'm just making a suggestion down the road.
Agreed.
Sorry, Nita. He strayed off first. That's why I was like...
Usually do.
So my question, uh, is, uh, will this, uh, create, if, if decided to look further into the, uh, step and all of that, will this, uh, is this a potential situation where the applicant would, may not apply because of this or is, is there time?
Well, I, obviously no, no promises or offers have been made. Um, we just felt that this, this candidate was, was worthy of a higher, uh, step level of pay. So, um, if we go back and say this is what it is, um, we might lose this individual. I'm not sure.
If I may...
Oh, I'm sorry, April.
Yes, go ahead, April.
I, I apologize. So I just wanted to say a couple of things. This is already, uh, more than a dollar less than what this applicant is currently making. Um, and she is fully aware of the wages and she cannot accept less than a step five. That's already taking a hit to her income. Um, again, that is her decision. I completely respect that, but I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that there are only two drug medcalc facilities in this county that operate in, in substitute disorder, medcalc, uh, drug medcalc, Title 22 provision of services. And she has operated more than 11 years in that setting. There is nobody who has been doing that lead role in the county as long as she has. She has five times those experience. She was at this step level when she left last time. So if she didn't jump to another, she would have been with the county facility for, um, almost 15 years. Um, I believe that there is nobody, knowing what I know in my 10 years of experience, there is nobody who has been providing lead drug medcalc substance use services under the state DHCS, um, drug medcalc programs as long as she has. She was doing it when I first got here. So I, I just wanted to say that she has years, five times experience. Um, she is fully aware, she will not accept below a step five, and so we will lose her. We have not offered anything. We have not promised anything, but in, uh, preliminary, uh, conversations with her, she has disclosed that. So, and I understand that the ramifications that this may have with the Class and Comp Study. So I just would like the board to please reconsider.
Supervisor Spocky?
Did I understand correctly, because I don't think it was in the memo, that there's a, uh, incentive, uh, for this position as well?
Because it is a hard-to-fill position? Yes, there is an incentive.
Okay. And, and I think that needs to be part of the, uh, decision-making from that applicant. And I get it that it's a position that's hard to fill, but at the same time, we struggled and, um, I think the biggest step I've seen us take when we had the 12 steps was step eight. Um, and even that one was a difficult decision to make. And here we're offering the biggest of the biggest steps. And I, I would love for us to use the Class and Comp Study Committee to review if we need to change something within the salary schedule versus starting people at the end where to me the steps are longevity slash loyalty slash dedication to the county and serving the community, not let's get you up the steps so we can get you the pay that you want. Um, I struggle with that. Um, I'm willing to go to step three and I, it sounds to me like that wouldn't lead to any positive, uh, results for you. Uh, but I just can't go all the way to the top step, uh, in one fell swoop. I know that this, um, applicant did work prior to this with the county. However, I do know that the rules of engagement for, uh, county employment is one year of, uh, separation i- is, uh, creates a restart. Uh, and it's been much more than one year. I believe it's been at least five, uh, since, I think, 2017 or something like that if I'm correct.
It's been a couple of years, yes.
So I, I...
And she left at step five prior to the Class and Comp. We implemented Class and Comp while she was away. So the, you know, the, there are a difference in wages, but what another possible solution be to her, her salary is important to her, so potentially maybe bring her in at the step five with no sign-on?
Ms. Grant?
Well, if, if your boards approve benefits for particular circumstances, unless those benefits are conditioned upon discretion, I mean, hard-to-filling... benefits are conditioned upon discretion, I mean, hard to fill positions, it's a little difficult to, to negotiate on things your board's already approved. But if, if some type of further discussion with this candidate is necessary, you may want to put it over because the only thing that is on the agenda right now is simply the, the approval of advanced step increase. So you can't expand upon the item today, unfortunately.
And when you had initial discussions, did the candidate, or did you let the candidate know about the sign on?
Yes, I, April's nodding, yes, I'm sure of that.
Okay.
Then we couldn't, yeah, we couldn't go back on that.
No.
Any other comments? Open it up to the public before we come back and talk more about it or take action? So is there anybody from the public? I'm not sure if there's anyone on Zoom.
I do not see a hand on Zoom.
With that, I'll bring it back to the board and discuss further or take action. Supervisor Green, I see your pen is hiding behind the water bottle.
Yeah. We're not in January, but if you need volunteers, I imagine some arm twisting may be possible. As to today's item, kind of awkward. Yeah, we're kind of trending toward a little negotiation, and that's awkward and a public thing. So we are just here to talk about the approval of the step five. And notwithstanding all the previous hard work of the class and comp committee and our overall desire as a county to maintain integrity, I view class and comp, as many people do, I imagine, as an imperfect thing, as kind of a living document. And one reason we're going to fire up the committee again in January is to take a look at some things that obviously need to change, especially at the lower ranges where we're not competitive with a fast food outlet. So, and, and the process that exists is to, yeah, the standard policy is HR can go up to a three based on some variation in that, but if we're going to go over that, the board gets to chime in. I think the qualifications have been expressed amply here. I think the need for this particular position, drug counseling in a county where drug abuse and substance use disorder is so prevalent and so damaging to our community. If there is a hit to the integrity of class and comp, I will take it in this instance because the need for this service is so urgent and because the qualifications of this candidate, as discussed here in broad day life for everyone to, to parse, are so substantial. And I want to put this person to work. I want to put this person to work yesterday. So that's my view on it. Thank you.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, just, once again, want to make it very clear, this has nothing to do with the applicant that is putting in here, it's the work that was done by the class and comp committee. Like I said, there were, it didn't just come out of thin air. These were requests that were happening that needed to be addressed to set up a policy as we move forward, as we always do, trying not to set precedent as we, as we go forward. So, you know, my thoughts haven't changed, I just want to make it very clear. I just heard it again, re-stated about the qualifications, and that is not what I'm doing. I'm not questioning any of that on this. I'm just talking about the process we worked hard to set up, and yeah, it's always changing. I mean, it formed into this, the current policy that we currently have because of other requests, other directors' input, you know, as we went through that process. So, you know, that's, I just want to make that comment one more time before the vote's taken today.
Any other statements? I think for me, I understand that, I understand the need to reevaluate and look at the steps as done with the class and comp study. I am in agreement that this position is very dire to Lake County because of the situation in regards to substance abuse. So for me, I'm, I'm willing to move forward today, but at the same time, ensure that we readdress the steps and implement that and keep this in mind while doing so. That way, and, and do it expeditiously, I guess you could say, or put that in, in motion so that that way, it's being done simultaneously. So when, when and if this, this situation comes up, we have something to base off of, and this can be done as a, basically a case-by-case situation. So that's, that's where I stand on that. So with that, I think is, if there's a motion, I think that's where we're at here.
Prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead, Supervisor Simon.
I, I would like to make a motion to deny the approval of the advanced step increase for substance abuse counselor senior Denise Newman at step five.
Second.
So I have a motion to add a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye. Motion carries, or motion to deny carries, three, two. And so with that, it looks like we'll come back at, and look, look further into that, and then we'll go to the, to that later, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, April, for, for your assistance on that. All right, so that closes 5.4 from the consent agenda. We'll go on to 5.10 that was pulled. This item is adopt resolution approving the application for the California Museum Grant Program for the Lake, the Lake Pomo Gallery Project, and this was pulled by a citizen, Leslie Miller, if you'd like to come up and state why you wanted to pull this, and then go from there.
Yes, again, my name is Leslie Miller. I'm on the advisory committee for the museums of Lake County, which I take pride in. And I'm also a member of the Scots Valley Band of Pomo Indians here in Lakeport. And beyond my control, I'm now an elder. So I know the tribe is, thinks positive about this, and I would think most of the other tribes would be on board with this. And through the TAC Committee, they approve these, the resolution to be forwarded for this application. What this does is, the California Cultural and Historic Endowment Grant, what it does is allows the improvements or the redesign of the gallery itself, which is long overdue. And also, it, it, kind of, the modernization of it, it's, it's, again, a long time overdue. And we, we lead children through here on tours, which is very important. It's more important that we can even think of through their eyes to see these exhibits and having direct descendancy from a lot of these people who have made these exhibits. So it's a very important improvement if the board so desires to approve the resolution. But what it does, it, it protects the exhibits too. And that's, we've been kind of using old tools to preserve this stuff, and I know it puts a strain on the staff at the museum too. So, and we want to define the details to each tribe's story of how, from what origin, what was their story to now? So the public get a better understanding or education to the Pomo culture, which is very important here. So I just would like to see this passed through on behalf of the Pomo culture here, which is dear and dear to me. I've been fighting for tribal rights for 30 years here through other government agencies. So I would like to see this passed, so I request that the board do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this? Anybody on Zoom? Sorry.
No, no, I was not paying attention there. Nope, no hands on Zoom.
So I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, offer the resolution?
Resolution has been offered. Johanna, if you can conduct the roll call.
I apologize, I didn't ask if anybody else wanted to say anything, I just jumped into it.
Just, just real quick, thank you for your participation in the committee for the museums, very important that we cherish our past and our culture.
Sorry about that, Supervisor.
Oh, no worries.
All right, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye. Motion carries five, or resolution has been passed five, zero. Thank you for coming in and, yep. So that'll close the 5.10. Oh, my goodness, my, there we go. So I think Todd's still here, so we're going to go ahead and do 7.3, consideration of resolution, authorizing the behavioral health director to sign the standard agreement for HHAP funds and public review and approval of County of Lake homeless, homeless housing assistance and prevention, HHAP round four application. And with that, we'll give the floor back to Todd, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, I guess I should have the left. Todd McCaffey, Avril Services. As you recall, this item came to your board last, last week, and I want to thank you for allowing us to bring this item back to the board. As was stated, this is yet another round of homeless housing assistance prevention funding. And as we talked about last week, the state still has not assigned or allocated a dollar amount to date, as this funding is still reliant upon the point-in-time count, which has still not been approved and finalized by the Department of Housing and Community Development. So, again, as we explained last week, in order for us to apply for this funding, we need to have a public hearing, and so that's why we are here again today. We took the board's suggestions from last week to bump up our goals in the application, which we have done so. And so before you was a revised iteration of the application. And I'm hoping Scott Abbott is here to perhaps fill in what I missed. I may have missed something, but is he here? I know he's tuned in somewhere.
Somewhere.
Supervisor Sabatier, please, you have your pen up. Go ahead.
I have a question. You say you've bumped up the numbers as presented. I, I do not see the application in the agenda with any numbers. I see the resolution that we're supposed to sign for round four. I see the H hap three information, but I do not see the application that was present in the previous week.
We didn't, we, well, we did, we did bump it up to, what, 15%, I believe. Oh, there's Scott.
Yes, I didn't see the actual tables included in the, in the documents that the board received. Thought enough you gave them a separate one or not, whether you were just talking or not. If not, I can share, share that document.
If you can, that would be helpful, because it would look different from the one, I believe, that we presented last week.
Right.
Yeah, go ahead and share that.
Let me just make sure I'm sharing the right thing here. Okay. This is, what we wanted to update, as we talked about last week, was the, on tab four, was the outcome goals. And I took Supervisor Green's suggestion and moved everything up to 15% and changed, you know, the, the numbers accordingly. As you probably recall, everything previously was at 10%. So now the goals represent 15.
And again, that, and, and yes, thank you Supervisor Green for making that suggestion last week. And also, it is, I mean, it's based upon what Governor Newsom's suggestion was, that we needed to come at this with a little more aggressive, be more aggressive about what, what we're trying to do. And Scott and I do believe that 15% is certainly attainable.
It is. Well, I mean, it's a good goal to strive for.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I have a question. Can you go to the returning to homelessness portion of the data table? Because I'm really confused how those numbers pan out. I believe it's the last table. It says that we start at 7%. We're going to have a now 2% change. And then it says change in percentage of baseline is 14%. I, I'm confused as to where the 14 comes from, and then the target, I get that's 5%. But wouldn't the change of percent of baseline also be 5%? Or is going from 7 to 5% a 14% difference? Like, I'm not getting the math as to how 14% comes up. Is that an automatic thing within the data table of how that?
This isn't, this is one I didn't change of all of them.
It did change because it was 1% last time.
Oh, was it? Okay. Funny, I don't remember changing anyway. This is also a difficult one, as the, as the table here, you know, says, all this information is currently not being collected. Datum said is, is added in the county's HMIA. So it's kind of hard to kind of establish what it, what a baseline is from that. I mean, there, the state's baseline said for us was 7%, but that's based on the data that we, we supplied, which, which isn't very, very well. And so, I'm sorry, Supervisor, what was your question again?
I'm, I'm confused where 14% comes from.
Um, is, I think it's going from, I think, from 7 to 14.
No, because we're going from 7 to 5. Anyways, I, I was very confused by that number. That whole table is very confusing to me. I, I will mention, I, I think that, so I'd like to make a proposal. When I'm looking at all of these numbers, it appears that we anticipate even at 15% ignoring this last return to homelessness, which is still significant but hard to quantify when the data's not available. But it appears to me even at 15% that we are going to assume, if it works out exactly as anticipated, that our people experiencing homelessness will increase. And so I'd like to offer that we go to 20%. When I go to 20%, those experiencing homelessness will be decreased from 413 to 330. Those newly experiencing homelessness will decrease from 259 to 207. And those exiting homelessness will increase from 120 to 144, which we started at 413. Here, we would end up at 393. And then for the accessing services, if we even remain at 10%, we're covering 399 accessing services, which covers the entire 393. And I think that our goal should be to stop the flow of increasing the population of homelessness. And if we can, if we can make that goal, I think we did something pretty amazing. And I know that that goal may be lofty, but I think that's the kind of lofty goals that I would like to see us submit, that we can maintain what we have, then we can start working on decreasing what we have. But with even 10% or 15%, it is being anticipated that we will continue to see a growth in those experiencing homelessness. I, I have done a little bit of research, granted, I am, certain behavioral health knows better than I. I do not see any penalties for not meeting our goals, but I think that is a goal that we should be aiming for, to not see an increase in the people that we have to serve that are experiencing homelessness in our community. And so I'm offering accessing services remain at 10, experiencing homelessness go to 20, newly homeless go to 20, exiting homelessness goes to 20. And I also changed mine to 2% change for returning to homelessness, but again, with the caveat that I'm not quite certain what that means when the data's not available. But that is my proposal for at least the application that is being submitted to the state. It's a lofty goal, but I think that's what we're all trying to do, is to stop the increase so that then we can really work at. so that then we can really work at fixing the problem.
Scott, I'm forgetting what, um, I know we, we had, uh, an extension to get this in. Uh, what is the drop dead date? Because this now is, this is the last board meeting of the year. This will have to come back to your board. How, uh, if, if we bring this back, when is the next board meeting?
Would it have to?
The tenth.
If we made those decisions?
I don't know that it has to come back. I think we can correct it on the fly.
Oh, I'm, I'm all for that.
What we're doing is, 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 like, as Todd mentioned, this is a, you know, a public hearing, getting feedback on this particular plan. Uh, the feedback that we, we, we get, uh, we can, we can then submit to, to the, to the state. And if, if the, the feedback that we're getting from Supervisor Sabatier is to, you know, move, move it to twenty percent, we, we can, we can easily do that.
All right. Without bringing it back?
Right.
And I believe it was.
I'm asking, I'm asking you.
I, I believe it was sixty days from November twenty-ninth when it was due, so that's like January twenty-seventh, I believe, with the thirty-one days. And so then we have a meeting on the tenth. If it needed to come back, that's not a problem, but I think we can change this on the fly, not have it come back.
I, I love.
And we're getting a nod from.
Ms. Grant?
I love the sound of that.
I, yes, there is also some language in the resolution that, that I would suggest your board should be wordsmithed, because it doesn't, um, it, it doesn't address the legal nature of a delegation, but I do have some language here that I'm happy to read to your board. If you find it acceptable, then, uh, your board could still approve the resolution subject to that amendment today.
Well, what I, what I should do is open it up to public first. We'll bring it back and we'll go through that, because I think that probably may be something the board's amenable to. Uh, is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak on this item? Is there anybody on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to what I think Johanna was looking to, so I was waiting for her to raise her hand, as she did. So it looks like we'll bring it back to the board for further discussion and action. And then, uh, did you want to read that, uh, information, Ms. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's the, it's paragraph two on page two of the resolution, and rather than the language there, I would suggest it reads, "The Behavioral Health Director is authorized to execute the attached standard agreement and any subsequent amendments or modifications thereto, which are necessary and directly related to the implementation of the HHAP program and/or the HHAP grant awarded. Any amendments and/or modifications which effect, effect substantive change beyond the parameters of the attached standard agreement, uh, shall be first approved by both the Board of Supervisors and Continuum of Care."
I like it.
As stated.
As stated. I think we need to, uh, there's a motion and then an offer of the resolution, right? Yeah?
So it's the motion to approve the, uh, application? I don't have the memo open.
With the, uh, numbers corrected as stated by Supervisor Sabatier.
And if the board doesn't mind, I can email that to, uh, Director Metcalf, uh, so he has the exact numbers, uh, as I stated them, and so.
I did my best to write them down, but yes.
Uh, I move to approve the revised application with the updated numbers for the H hap four funding.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Grant, is there something? Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, and now for the resolution.
I offer the resolution with the amendments as stated by Ms. Grant.
Resolution has been offered.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye. Resolution is passed, and, uh, thank you for the, uh, presentation, and, uh, thank you for joining us, Scott.
Thank you.
Hope you have a happy holidays.
All right, you too, as well.
Thank you.
With that, it looks like we'll cover our seven point two, which is introduction of an ordinance amending section two, three, A, point one of Article One, Chapter Two of the Lake County Code, compensation of the Board of Supervisors. And I'd like to add a caveat that, uh, the, uh, in the memo, it states a different number, but the actual number needs to say thirty-eight point six one eight percent, rather than the, I think it's a twenty-eight percent.
Yes, and it also, um, needs to be changed in the ordinance itself.
Okay, so just, just, uh, announcing that before we discuss it, and it looks like we will let Stephen Carter open this item or, or present this item, and we'll ask questions and move forward as needed.
That's all right, I'll do it. They're looking at me blindly.
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. No, normally I would, um, they're just here for Pam Samick, uh, HR Director, and Stephen Carter, the ACAIO, are here to answer any in-depth questions you have regarding the calculations or how they got to the numbers that they presented on the November, November first meeting. So as part of that meeting, ta, uh, staff was tasked to bring back the ordinance. That's what we're doing right here. We've already noticed the correction in both the memo and the ordinance. And briefly, the amendment, um, to the county code would to attach the increases for the Board of Supervisors to the Lake County Superior Judge, Judges' salaries at class code L nine 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 at thirty-eight point six one eight percent and a five percent increase for the Chair of the Board. And we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, and I apologize for assuming. See what happens when you assume. All right.
We won't define it.
Normally, that's what we would do.
Stephen, uh, I'll let you go first, and then Supervisor Sabatier, looks like he has a question from there.
It might go toward, thank you. It might be go, going towards what Supervisor Sabatier's gonna request, but during the last hearing, um, one of the big things was making sure that the fund was available for this adjustment. And the first payment has come through for the secured property taxes, and when you extrapolate that out through the course of the rest of the year, as well as looking at a ten-year history, there is more than enough, I don't want to get into too many details, but there's far more available than we anticipated during the final recommended budget. And part of that is because there was a rule correction done, and I didn't have the AB eight calculation at the time. But now I do have the AB eight now, and, uh, for twenty-two, for twenty-two, twenty-three, we're expecting a little over twenty million, five hundred thousand, and we budgeted just under eighteen million, five hundred thousand.
Ignore it.
So there's money there, as well as for some potential changes at mid-year for other things.
Well, thank you, Stephen. Did you want to add anything? Supervisor Sabatier? And then Supervisor Green, you can follow.
Solely laughing about the microphone, not you. You're going in and out. You're going in and out. Appreciate you, uh, bringing this and providing the details that was requested, uh, which was affordability and, uh, budgeting, uh, for this. Uh, I will preface my, uh, comments with, I, I'm all for moving forward, but I want to caution the board on how we're moving forward. My preference is to go with sixty percent of electeds in the county. And here's the reason why I say that. Uh, I know we're trying to insulate ourselves and where we don't make that decision. As I've thought about it and as I started doing some research, mainly because the twenty-eight percent popped up, and I was like, what happened? And there was a potential that the, uh, judges had a raise, uh, and so I started looking at transparent California. Number one, there is no single pay for a judge, so I'm not quite sure what we're using as the basis for the judge. There's the, the head judge, there's years of service, and so that's not explained, and I don't, I, if we're gonna move in that direction, I think we need to be in greater detail in the ordinance or resolution that we're approving, because it doesn't state anything. So I used an average of those judges. And when looking at transparent California from twenty fifteen all the way to twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two wasn't in there, um, there was an average of four percent increase per year. There was also one year where it dropped down when we looked at averages. I'm sure that, uh, Mr. Carter will tell us we're not looking at averages, but let me finish. And so there's nothing on there that says that we wouldn't drop down if that was the case. I'm struggling to know how I can walk around in the halls of the courthouse, looking at our employees that work hard to serve our community, knowing that I indirectly got a raise from just being attached to what the state of California decides, while our employees may not have gotten a raise. I also worry about the fact that the state of California now gains a certain level of control over our budget. Those two things lead me to believe that the better way is to continue what we've had before, which is sixty percent of electeds. It's not a huge difference. It's eighty-seven instead of eighty-eight. But I'm concerned about, and we talk a lot about morale, we talk a lot about, uh, people wanting to, uh, work here and feel good about working here, and if I know that we are continuously getting upgraded by an outside force, and we aren't having the discussions to upgrade the pay of our staff, that is not a comfort zone I'm willing to be in. Either way, it, it reaches the same goal that is put in front of us today, but utilizes a different, um, tool, I guess, or a different process to reach that goal, and, and looking forward to the conversation.
CEO? Oh, did you want me to? Supervisor Green?
Well, if we, if we go sideways, this may, may be an irrelevant question. Uh, but three digits of accuracy, so thirty-eight point six one eight, I assume that rounds the numbers based on whatever the current base salary is, but to, to one of the points raised, if there's a COLA or if there's an increase, uh, will, will that same three digits of precision, uh, introduce, uh, some decimal places that, that wouldn't be, uh, created in this current incarnation? I'm just curious about the three digits of, of precision on this.
It would not change, because payroll has a, a table set up just for electeds, or in this case, we might have to do, have to do a separate table just for the board. And once we set that and per what our current grade steps are, the whole table moves up. Keep the same distance away from the courts, the Superior Court. So you guys would be the only ones on a table, and the whole table would move. So if you're on grade E one forty-seven, let's say you get fifty-five dollars an hour, but you need a two, you need a two percent raise, and the next step is technically two and a half away? You don't change steps, the whole table, E one forty-seven, the whole table moves up two percent. Base table does.
And then, uh, question or statement about COLAs, judicial COLAs, so.
See my microphone?
Judicial COLAs, we would bump up, so we would follow the judicial COLA thing as opposed to our.
Base table would, yes.
Internal metric. All right, thank you.
And I did get the, um, Superior Court Judge salary. There is a specific line item, and I got it from Cal HR. And that is the pay code that, uh, CAO, uh, mentioned, L nine 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 nine? And it does have the, um, next year's COLA in that memo from Cal HR. I don't have that memo with me, but I think it's one point eight, but I could get you clarity on that. But it, yes, it will go up as they go up or go down as they go down for that specific pay code.
And then follow-up to your, uh, proposed index, uh, the board sets the elected salaries? So, okay.
Well, that has been a conversation that we've had multiple times is, um, you know, do we attach our salaries to salaries that we control, or do we, um, do we attach them to the judges so they're out of our control? And, um, it, neither way is perfect. It's really not.
All right. Any other comments or questions before we open it up to the public? So open it up to public input. Is there anybody in the chambers that'd like to speak on this item? Is there anybody on Zoom?
Yes, there is one hand, two hands on Zoom.
All right. Elizabeth, if you can unmute, and, uh, when you state your name, we'll start your three minutes.
Thank you. This is Elizabeth Larson with Lake County News. Um, I, I had a question. So the class comp has been brought up a lot when talking about this, and looking at the class comp, um, the board, the board, uh, pay levels in the class comp with the comparison counties showed that Lake County was actually above the median, I, as, as I recall, looking at it. And so I'm curious, did you recalculate all of those current totals to see where you guys fall now? Because just based on that, it doesn't make sense, the raise does not make sense. Um, so what is the justification ultimately for doing this? And has the county, to the best of your knowledge, ever attempted to attach supervisory pay to Superior Court pay in the past?
Is there more to your question, or you want them to answer? How's this, uh?
That, that's, that's it for now, thank you.
Okay.
I don't have the board bench with me, but I don't recall it being higher. And I can't speak to the history of whether or not this has been assigned, uh, to, to judge salaries. I don't have that history.
Ms. Grant?
So the person who's been here for a hundred years can probably answer some of this. I don't recall, um, at least in the last thirty years, that this has been any different than tied to elected officials. I can tell you that there are other county jurisdictions that do tie it to the judiciary for the reason that Supervisor Pisca was, was referencing. And obviously, as with any decision of your board, there are pros and, and cons in terms of your consideration, but the jurisdictions that choose the judiciary, I believe, though I haven't pulled them all, I believe they do that so that they are not in control of the increases. But, uh, at least that was true a number of years ago. I haven't checked into it at all in the recent past.
And if I can speak to the bench, it, it really wasn't an apples-to-apples comparison, because some, some of the, uh, boards in our twelve comparison counties are just there for the meeting. Some boards work more, so, um, it, it really isn't a one-on-one comparisons.
Stephen?
Part I was gonna add to the bench is that if you included, you know, not just the counties that were part of the study, but if you included us in the study, we were the actual median, not above or below, but if you include just the counties, then we are technically, we are technically just a, a little bit above, but the main issue is that some of those counties pay like twenty-four hundred a month, because they're only getting paid to show up four times a month, not the same thing where we're expecting, or is expecting a full-time board member.
So I think the.
All of us are asking the same question.
It's his tie.
All right.
I'm good.
I'm good. I didn't know if, uh, was there any follow-up on that, or was that, uh?
Just from memory, I, I think Napa County ties to the judges and.
Colusa does.
Colusa, and I, that's Mendocino, I can't remember that one. I thought it was, but I can't remember. I, I know, I know Napa is for sure. So it's, it's, um, it's just two different ways of doing things, and, you know, counties in, in the com, class and comp did both.
So with that, is there, uh, the next person that has their hand up in Zoom? I'm not sure who it is, but, uh, if you can unmute and, uh, state your name for the record?
Hi, yes, my name is Lynn. And that's not, I actually live in Lake County.
Lynn, what's your last name, if you will?
Oh, I'm sorry, Lynn Bundy.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
And that's from being on previous Zooms. And I, forgive me, it took me a while. I was on Facebook, and I could not find a way to get on Zoom, so I had to call in, and I just barely missed the previous resolution you were talking about, which I very much wanted to, uh, comment on. And so I was wondering, number one, would I be allowed to comment, knowing that you've already done the resolution? Or number two, excuse me, will there be a future session? Uh, it sounds like you're not having one next week where I could comment, because I'm.
Is this for the--
I'm horrified. I live in that neighborhood and I have a lot to say.
Ma'am, is this in regards to the HHAP or is this--
In regards to the homeless shelter in Lucerne.
But that's, that wasn't what 7.3 was about, that had nothing--
Oh, it wasn't?
--to do with that. Yeah, no, it's, it's an application to apply for HHAP funds. So that's, that's, that item has not been brought to this board or would it be either? So, so thank you. That, yeah. That item's also--
Okay, so it won't be brought to the board at all, even though it's Lake County? I'm sorry to ask you this.
It's a private sale, ma'am, so it has nothing to do with that. And I think I'm, I don't know if I'm able to comment more on it, Ms. Grant, or it's not on the agenda and--
No, it's not on the agenda, but you're correct. It's not this particular item. This is only for the grant funds that were specified in the item, so.
Right. And that was 7.3. So thank you, ma'am, for--
Thank you.
All right. All right. With that, is there another hand up on Zoom?
There are no new hands up on Zoom.
All right. So are the hands still up? Because we can go ahead and allow for--
They're lower.
Okay.
No, they're down.
Okay. All right. With that, is there anybody else in the chambers that would like to speak on this? All right. With that, we'll close public input and bring it back to the board for further discussion or action. And so is there any other comments? I'll go ahead and make a comment. Appreciate Supervisor Sabatia, I appreciate you bringing up the 60%. I think, I like, I mean, I feel, I feel you when you say that seeing people that work for the county and whatnot and having that situation intact. However, I do also feel for the public every time we bring this up. I know this is a controversial issue. I know it's been for quite some time. And I have the, I've been blessed with the, with the challenge of public shame, you know, social berating, social distortion. And I'm a person that desires to make things better, anything that I'm responsible for, better than the way I received it or the way it was given to me. So I aim to end controversy, not sow it or perpetuate it. And so, and also, I don't want to perpetuate it and take it down the road for someone else that may take my position or another supervisor's position to do so. So for me, I would rather tie it to the judges, even though I know that dynamic of the possibility of a supervisor getting an increase, I don't like the fact that we have to vote on it. For me, it makes it very awkward for us and it gives the public more opportunity to feel even more upset that we are. And they don't need division. They don't need that discord. So I'm willing to make that, that decision to do so. So I'm fine with that. That's where I stand. I wish it was the lower amount, like you were saying, because it's a little lower with the 60% Supervisor Sabatia, but I just don't want to perpetuate anymore discord in this county. Or give someone the opportunity to have to deal with it when I'm gone.
Good.
Yeah, you know, today's vote, I'm going to make my vote. I sat here on this diocese when we were doing the budgets and voted that we stay status quo until we could, we could make some changes. And I look at it for the long term, the future too. I think tying it to the judges, for me, takes it out of our, this board's hands as it moves forward, no matter who's sitting in District One or any of the other seats, and then just moves it along that way. I think that's the right way to do it, you know, voting. And this is going to be a vote to get a raise at this point, but that's not the intention going forward. I think, just as you said Supervisor Crandall, there are many things that we are challenged with. Like I stood alone today on a vote today that I truly felt was the right vote and I did that, you know, and yeah, go back and forth. But hey, that's what it is. So I think making this vote today will be something that a future supervisor does not have to deal with that part of it. Now, the state may do something that takes it out of that individual's control, just as Supervisor said, but Sabatia said, but that's today for my vote, that's, I just wanted to get it out there. That's why I'm making that vote.
And--
Supervisor, go ahead Supervisor.
It won't be very much longer that we're back at the bargaining table with the units. And this, you know, we'll be able to proceed with that without any of this clouding those decisions that we have to make going forward.
Supervisor Green.
Thank you. And appreciate all the comments, actually, including public perception, controversy, how our rank and file might perceive it. I was part of that rank and file until very recently. So, you know, I'm sensitive to the ongoing struggles of our, all of our employees to make, make do with what they're making. And we've stretched the limits of class and comp and, and we're still suffering from high vacancy rates, still suffering with the notion that regardless of the department or the particular step or salary, we're all, we're all struggling to get by here and affordable housing and rising costs affect us all. That said, we just shot down a step five that basically would have bought a person into line with what the suits are making now. And, and having been in the seat for just a few weeks, the whole thing about class and comp is we do need to recognize the classification, the scope of work that people do, and we need to compensate them according to that. I can tell you, and it's no offense to any of my former colleagues or line workers, that sitting in this seat and working with my colleagues here is definitely a step up in responsibility and definitely a big step up in the scope of work and, and requirements to engage with the community, be transparent, be good leaders, be good advocates, again, for our rank and file workers. I very much strongly support this proposal. I do think tying it to the judges' salaries makes more sense than going back to an average of the electeds. And so I'm supportive of that. You know, to me, it's six, one-half does and the other. You're not, you're not going to get out of the controversy whether you're tying it to the judges or the department heads, but I do think the judges makes more sense. So I'm going to support this as it is presented and recommended by staff. Thank you.
There any other comment? Ms. Grant.
Just a reminder, I'm sure your board all know this already, but if your board moves forward with the ordinance, there would be two motions. First, a motion to waive reading and have the ordinance read in title only. And if that moves forward, then there would be a motion to advance for second reading. And in this case, it would be to January 10. And as I've already informed you, this particular ordinance is not effective until 60 days from that second reading.
So that would be March 10th at the very earliest?
Okay.
It's a little difference from what I see on the staff report. So for the recommended action. So you said there's two actions. So it sounds like the second thing you said would have been the motion to introduce the ordinance and advance it to the next thing. But the first is to introduce it and waive reading?
The first, the first motion here, at least how the county has always done it, is to waive reading of the ordinance and have it read in title only. And then second is to, a motion to advance the ordinance to, for second reading to the next available agenda, as long as it's at least five days handsome.
And just to clarify, we want to offer the corrected version of the ordinance?
Yes.
I'm going to defer to my more experienced colleagues because that first one should be automatic and I'll get there. I think the motion is to waive reading of the ordinance and introduce it by reading title only in the ballpark.
Close enough.
Close enough?
Second. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1.
I guess the second motion--
She has to read it in title only.
So the title is an ordinance amending section 2-3A dot 1 of Article 1, Chapter 2 of the Lake County Code.
I think it's the second motion would be to introduce the ordinance to amend section, introduce the corrected ordinance to amend section--
Advance the second reading.
I was getting there.
Motion to advance the second reading to--
January 10th.
10th.
Oh, because you just did the introduction. Okay. Then I move we advance the corrected ordinance as it was read to January 10th.
For a second reading.
For a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And the last is corrected ordinance?
No, it's done.
Oh, it's done? So that, the ordinance will take place on the 10th?
Yes.
Right? Got it. All right. With that, it closes this item and we will, I think we've covered everything.
Except, yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I knew that. I just, I just meant everything else. So, but that will go on and move on to the calendars. Is there a volunteer?
Sure, I'll get started.
Supervisor Sabatia, go ahead and start out.
I'll keep it brief. We've got some holidays coming up. I've been working on the database software, went over with, I wanted to make sure, even though we did get approval from the board, to move forward with it, that was under Director Darby. So I made sure to meet with Director Turner to ensure that this is something that she wanted for her department, because I didn't want to force something onto her department that she didn't agree with. She really appreciated what she saw and I was provided a list of additions from both code enforcement and Director Turner, so that I'm implementing those things currently. They are getting access to all of their hardware and software that they need. I know that IT has purchased licenses for access, or actually Microsoft Office, which has access for every single user in Lake County, so they'll have access to the software. And also, they've purchased some rugged laptops to put in their vehicles, as well as rugged printers to go along with their vehicles. That way they can do the majority of their work out in the community doing code enforcement rather than having to go back and forth between the office and the field. So that should definitely, and that was all stuff that we approved through the budget. So that's all coming together. By January 1st, I hope to have finished all of the additions, run it for a pilot, and then bring it back to the board supervisors for the final approval to make it go live so that we can go ahead and start utilizing that. I'll be working on that. I am meeting with our new climate change resiliency officer tomorrow. Looking forward to that discussion on the Jump Start Grant. And after that, there will be some holidays. And when I come back, obviously, I will be continuing to work on that software and database. I'm going to be preparing for our PEG meeting that's on the 9th of, of January. The early part is pretty short or pretty clear on my calendar for the first week of January. I do have a continuum of care meeting that I plan to continue to attend with Supervisor Green as well. The city of Clear Lake will have its meeting on the 5th. And on January 10th, when the board comes back and reconvenes, I will not be here. I will be in Alabama for the Economic Mobility Leadership Network, or is it Economic Leadership Mobility? I never remember how the acronym works. But I will be in Mobile, Alabama, going through their field trip of all the things that they've done to accomplish economic mobility for their population and bringing back to the board everything that I've learned from there. The next one is, again, I think it's Coco Nino in Arizona. I think that's the name of the county and that's in Grand Canyon. And I'm looking forward to that one. That one will be in May. But at this moment in time, that is my schedule until I come back in January.
I can go.
Supervisor Pysko.
Yes, last week, we had a big collaborative meeting with, well, it's a Lake County Fuels Reduction Conversation with Clerk, our local RCD, our climate officer, NAPA RCD, and some of the contractors that have been helping with the LiDAR mapping and working on just our strategy going forward. And also Karen Gaffney from the North Coast, or the NCRP, which is, that, that partnership is gone. They have been doing so much, the resource partnership, and they are so generous with their time in helping us with the projects that we need to get done. So, you know, just incredible collaboration outside of the county and looking forward to lots of good work. We've already met several times and it's always a pleasure to be able to collaborate and expand on everything that we're doing. Then Saturday morning, my son and I were privileged to participate in Reis Across America at Hartley Cemetery. And Sunday night, the Candy Cane Run came to Cobb and was very, very exciting for everybody. And then yesterday, we had our kickoff meeting with the contractor that is putting together the grant application for the Hazard Tree Removal. So that is underway and we will be having more updates in the new year as that gets ramped up. The other thing that I have to report on, which is extremely exciting, is that USGS approved $415,000 for our LiDAR project. And so this is three-deep mapping that will take place all over Lake County. And we did get $160,000 from the Conservation Department. So we're funded for that project and that, I, I did use $5,000 of my cannabis money to engage with the contractor to put together those applications and get that work done. I think it was over the summer, I met them in May at the State Wildfire Enforcement Task Force Meeting. And so that work will be happening. We've got that award. We just got it. Really exciting. So that, the collaboration I was talking about with the meeting from last week is how we're getting there. So next steps is, you know, we're going to have that, that data, but how, what's the best way to get that out to the public? And how do we develop mapping tools that the public can access? And so the next step in January, we'll be meeting again with that group to, to write a grant, to have those contractors engaged in those mapping tools, which they do for all of the counties around us and throughout the Bay Area and throughout the state. So that's really exciting. That's been a push for, well, since May. And I'm just, I'm really delighted that it's coming through and there's still more work to do. But this is going to be a public-facing tool that anybody can access to look at their property or look at projects or, you know, big fuel projects can be designed around this. And also, lots more to report on that as we find out more and as we push forward with Yeah, I don't have a lot this week, possibly a meeting later this week with CAO, but I don't know that that's actually going to happen. And then coming back in January, agenda review on the 4th, right? Also, there's a TID meeting at the same time. And also, a home hardening update meeting later that day. And Thursday, a meeting with NCO. And then that will bring me to, to the 10th. We'll be back here for our meeting, first meeting of the year.
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, exciting news, speaking of line staff and program managers. Tonight, Lakeport City Council, my former supervisor, one of my former supervisors, Kim Costa, will be sworn in as a Lakeport City Council member, joining another young person, Mr.-- young person, Mr. Disney, joining the council. So, uh, uh, Maria's appointment to CDD, uh, created a vacancy on the council. My appointment to this board created a vacancy on the council. Those have both now been filled and, uh, so Kim will be sworn in tonight. I'm gonna be there to cheer her on and offer her condolences. Uh, but, but I think both choices, the, the council is gonna be, uh, in very good hands moving ahead in twenty twenty-three. So shout out to my city peeps and also to Ms. Costa. I hope to be, uh, I had to, uh, had to bump, cause we had a little, uh, COVID exposure last week, but, uh, hope to be meeting tomorrow with Susan Cronus. She's one of the last department heads, uh, on my schedule, uh, to, to do a meet and greet and hear what's going on over there. And I want to thank Carolyn Purdy for all her hard work and scheduling, uh, all the department meetings I've had over the last few weeks. But before I let Mr. Howe out of the room, I should have pointed out, I haven't yet had the, uh, chance to sit down with him and get the orientation for probation. So, uh, anyone in probation, uh, if you can do a shout out to Mr. Howe, I got two days. I want that short timer, one foot out the door orientation, uh, if only to figure out what type of succession planning is going on in there that we didn't manage to talk about today. And, uh, and just be supportive to them as they're gonna go through some changes, uh, substantial changes with Mr. Howe's appointment. And it may have to wait until after the second, it probably will, but, um, uh, I'm told it will be a day-long orientation when I do get out to the Sheriff's Department and the jail and stuff like that. So I'm excited to do that, uh, as soon as some of the dust settles. Uh, and I'd be honored to get that tour, both with the incoming sheriff, Mr. Howe, and, uh, you know, I'm, because it's a day-long tour, I'm sure there's gonna be plenty of opportunity to share. So I'd love to spend, uh, some time with Lieutenant Bingham and, uh, all of the management staff out there that, that work so hard to keep us safe. That's that. January, um, January third. Uh, we don't meet the third, if I'm correct. If the swearing in is gonna happen on the second, it's probably already handled, but I would appreciate a heads up if that's gonna be a public event, if we can be there and attend, uh, I would love to do it. And, uh,
Just to let you know, January ninth is the ceremonial swearing in that will, or January tenth, sorry, will be the ceremonial swearing in, in the chambers during the meeting. And on, I actually just got an email from Maria Valdez that she will now make herself available between nine and twelve to make sure that it's done before twelve.
So it'll be a quick and dirty on the second and then the more ceremonial and, and cake on the, on the tenth? I would like to see cake. Uh, and that, and that's about it. My phone and my calendar are blowing up a little bit more than it has in the first couple of weeks, so, uh, I do anticipate next year we'll be busy, but I'm looking forward to the Christmas holiday and I hope everyone, uh, has some good time off. Thank you.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, um, I'm gonna keep mine real short and sweet here. Have a meeting scheduled, I think we're scheduled for the fifth, right Jessica? With our Board of Supervisor presentation on January fifth to go over that one when we bring it back to the board. And then Friday the sixth with the CAO. We canceled this week, um, this week's meeting as we move forward, but I will report that we did have, I was with Supervisor Sabatier, Lake Transit Authority, Area Planning Council. You know, we're moving in a positive direction in Lake County, I think all the way across the board, but I think this is the first time we're, we're fully staffed at LTA and ABC. But also like that, um, our new partners that we have in, I'll get it right, is it Paratransit, correct? Um, that, that is operating, it really has done a good job. It brought some proclamations together. We have some great drivers out there that not only just do the job that we ask them to do, but also go above and beyond many different times when they're out there dealing with the public. Uh, so there's been multiple proclamations this year that, um, I've been proud to be a part of. Uh, but you don't just put people on the bus. You deal with what they have going on during that day and sometimes it's an emergency and they step up. So I just, I wanna say that. Uh, hopefully happy holidays for everybody. Uh, it's an honor to serve here in this county and with all the folks at work at the, at the, um, at the, at the county and throughout all the agencies in Lake County. So happy holidays. Also wanna say that wasn't able to attend, but there was a retirement in the assessor's office, uh, and I think Marilyn Higgins, I think it was, on Richard Ford's office. I just wanna make that mention, uh, that we, we know we're losing folks every year, that, that happens, retirements happen. We celebrated some of those here, but I wanna thank everybody who's committed to public service in Lake County and hopefully the end of twenty twenty-two, which I'll be happy to get over with on a personal level. But, uh, be ready for twenty twenty-three. So thank you very much and happy holidays.
All right. Uh, first, I wanna thank everybody for this, uh, for the work they've conducted this year. You know, we, we, uh, you know, we knock on wood. I talked to some, we talked to some of the chiefs about some of the situations we've had in regards to emergencies and whatnot, real emergencies, not the sky is falling about random issues. But, um, we, uh, you know, we, we've got through this year and let's just hope that next year we'll have, uh, similar effect. But, um, yeah, so everybody, thank you in the county for your work. Thank you for your due diligence and, uh, we appreciate your work and we hope you enjoy your holidays, uh, New Year's as well. And with that, I'm gonna forego my calendar and just let it be and go into the holidays as it is. Go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
I do wanna make one last comment. Yesterday was the last day for Chief White. I also, um, wanna thank him for, uh, all the work that he's dedicated himself to doing here in Lake County. Wish him the best in Martinez. And I think that, uh, just like many of the leaders that work here for the County of Lake, uh, he has helped boost us to another level of expectation, uh, and, uh, standard to which we're all going to strive to meet. And wanted to share my appreciation and wish him the best of luck.
One more thing.
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you for being chair this year. You did a great job. It was not easy. It was a difficult year and, and, um, I really appreciate your leadership this year.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, it did go fast. And I think you're, you're next year. Tag you're in. With that, we'll go into closed session. Eight point one, public employee evaluation, behavioral health director. Eight point two, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D two and E one, one potential case. Eight point three, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine, one, Flish versus County of Lake. With that, we'll go into closed session. Thank you again. Thank you, Sam. Looks like we're coming up, all right, we're coming out of closed session. Um, just wanted to ask if there was any action that needed to be taken out of closed session?
Uh, yes, sir, it was.
All right.
Um, I move to approve the settlement of Flish v. County of Lake et al. in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars inclusive of attorney fees and costs.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we still have closed session, so I can't close the meeting. So we're gonna go back into closed session and conduct the evaluation. So with that, we're going back into closed session. Thank you.